From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board reconvened this morning. Good morning and welcome to the June 17 Kern County Board of Supervisors AM session. We begin as always with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Just a little bit of an echo here.
Yeah, we're gonna try and deal with that.
Agendas are available in the back of the room. We also are going to be displaying a QR code here momentarily, but there, if you want to follow a long paper form, old-school, that's in the back, but you can join the 21st Century with us and check out the QR code and access very comfortably from your seat, the agenda. We're going to move to our flag salute. This morning is particularly remarkable. U.S. Army Specialist Richard Guzman was drafted, drafted after attending Bakersfield College. Mr. Guzman received his infantry training at Fort Lewis, Washington, and was later shipped to Vietnam in 1968 in a combat engineer unit until he was wounded at fire support Base Bastogne in Vietnam. You remember that?
Yes.
This injury would earn him a Purple Heart. After his service, Mr. Guzman returned to Bakersfield, where he retired from a career in real estate. Mr. Guzman loves his Kern County community, remains active in various veteran and nonprofit groups. In a moment, he will lead us in the flag salute. At the completion, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silent meditation, whichever you prefer. Mr. Guzman, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. Please rise. Salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're glad you came home, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Before we move to, oh, no, we are going to our favorite, one of our favorite portions of the morning, which is the pet of the week. You're just gonna die when you see this little guy. Come on out. Been a favorite in the back for the last half hour. Nick, who do you have with you this morning?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have Forrest.
Oh, Forrest, how old is Forrest?
Forrest is just over a year. He's a Chihuahua mix, and he just came to the shelter just a couple of days ago, and he's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
And how big will he get?
Not much bigger than this.
Are these shrooms on his, oh, wow, how interesting. Okay, moving on, how big do we expect him to get?
He's about 10 pounds. He's not gonna get much bigger than that.
Not much bigger than 10 pounds, okay, very good. And what will, what will his new forever home get with, what, 20 bucks at the shelter?
Yeah, so your adoption comes with everything you need to be a responsible pet owner. It's gonna be microchipped, it's gonna be vaccinated, he's gonna be neutered, and he's gonna, he gets along...
Supervisor Couch said sorry, Forrest.
He gets along well with other dogs, and he is potty-trained as well, so he's gonna make somebody a good addition to their family.
How precious. Okay, well, that is quite a package. Does not include any shrooms, but, right? Okay, very good. But the hiker chip you can have, thank you. Okay. We have, again, I want to remind you that we are making available, very, very excited to announce it, we have the agenda available through QR code. Kathy, that's gonna go up, I presume?
Sure.
All right, excellent. So you can access this from your seat. If you're at home, you can access it from the screen, which is just totally remarkable. We're very excited about it, so please check it out, help us save some trees and some trouble, and of course, get you information quick, quick and easily. Moving along, the next matter is our consent agenda. Consent matters began on page two, and they include items three through five, as well as number eight. On page three, items 12 through 16. On page four, items 17 to 24, all items listed. On page five, items 25 to 27, as 29 will be pooled by the department, so not heard, but items 30 and 31 will remain on consent. On page six, all items listed, 32 to 38. On page seven, items 39 and 41, 40 to be withdrawn by the department, and also, I'm sorry, 41, excuse me. Item 39 will be included on consent. Item 40 is withdrawn by the department. The remaining matters, 41 through 46, will remain on consent. On page eight, items 47 to 51, as well as 53 to 55. On page nine, items 56 to 60. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on consent matters? Matters remain on consent when they are considered routine and non-controversial by county family. If you feel differently, we certainly want to hear about that, so now would be the time to inform the board of your position or provide your input. Okay, seeing none, gonna return to the board and ask for action from my colleagues.
Motion on consent.
Second.
Thank you, David. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. Is Mr. Carter Beardsley in the house? Are you here? I see you, very good. So, Mr., this is a moment, now that the consent matter has been, consent agenda has been approved, this is an opportunity to highlight one of the matters that was approved on consent today, and if you look at the agenda, item number five under consent is the appointment of Carter Beardsley as a fifth district member to the Housing Authority. I understand, Mr. Beardsley, you have some people here with you, but I want to invite you down to the podium for a moment, if you can introduce yourself to my colleagues. These are the supervisors who have been entrusted with Kern County. Supervisor Chris Parlier, Supervisor Jeff Flores, Supervisor David Couch, and Philip Peters. I'd like you to all meet our new appointee. He's fresh out of high school graduation, if you could believe that, and he is a total rock star in every regard. Operates with integrity, with class, with hard work, and with genuine love and devotion to Kern County in everything I see you do from the time you were this big. So, Mr. Beardsley, if you would like to say a few words, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Carter Beardsley, and I'm so excited to be here, and the newest appointee for the Housing Authority. I know I look young, it's just my sunscreen.
(laughing)
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning, and welcome to the June 17 Kern County Board of Supervisors AM session. We begin as always with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Just a little bit of an echo here.
Yeah, we're gonna try and deal with that.
Agendas are available in the back of the room. We also are going to be displaying a QR code here momentarily, but there, if you want to follow along, paper form, old school, that's in the back, but you can join the 21st Century with us and check out the QR code and access very comfortably from your seat, the agenda. We're gonna move to our flag salute. This morning is particularly remarkable. U.S. Army Specialist Richard Guzman was drafted, drafted after attending Bakersfield College. Mr. Guzman received his infantry training at Fort Lewis, Washington, and was later shipped to Vietnam in 1968 in a combat engineer unit until he was wounded at fire support Base Bastogne in Vietnam. You remember that?
Yes.
This injury would earn him a Purple Heart. After his service, Mr. Guzman returned to Bakersfield, where he retired from a career in real estate. Mr. Guzman loves his Kern County community, remains active in various veteran and nonprofit groups. In a moment, he will lead us in the flag salute. At the completion, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silent meditation, whichever you prefer. Mr. Guzman, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. Please rise. Salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're glad you came home, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Before we move to, oh, no, we are going to our favorite, one of our favorite portions of the morning, which is the pet of the week. You're just gonna die when you see this little guy. Come on out. Been a favorite in the back for the last half hour. Nick, who do you have with you this morning?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have Forrest.
Forrest, how old is Forrest?
Forrest is just over a year. He's a Chihuahua mix, and he just came to the shelter just a couple of days ago, and he's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
And how big will he get?
Not much bigger than this.
Are these shrooms on his, oh, wow, how interesting. Okay, moving on, how big do we expect him to get?
He's about 10 pounds. He's not gonna get much bigger than that.
Not much bigger than 10 pounds, okay, very good. And what will, what will his new forever home get with, what, 20 bucks at the shelter?
Yeah, so your adoption comes with everything you need to be a responsible pet owner. It's gonna be microchipped, it's gonna be vaccinated, he's gonna be neutered, and he's gonna, he gets along.
Supervisor Couch said sorry, Forrest.
He gets along well with other dogs, and he is potty-trained as well, so he's gonna make somebody a good addition to their family.
How precious. Okay, well, that is quite a package. Does not include any shrooms, but, right? Okay, very good. But the microchip you can have, thank you. Okay. We have, again, I want to remind you that we are making available, very, very excited to announce it, we have the agenda available through QR code. Kathy, that's gonna go up, I presume?
There it is.
All right, excellent. So you can access this from your seat. If you're at home, you can access it from the screen, which is just totally remarkable. We're very excited about it, so please check it out, help us save some trees and some trouble, and of course, get you information quick and easily. Moving along, the next matter is our consent agenda. Consent matters began on page two, and they include items three through five, as well as number eight. On page three, items 12 through 16. On page four, items 17 to 24, all items listed. On page five, items 25 to 27, as 29 will be pooled by the department, so not heard, but items 30 and 31 will remain on consent. On page six, all items listed, 32 to 38. On page seven, items 39 and 41, 40 to be withdrawn by the department, and also, I'm sorry, 41, excuse me, item 39 will be included on consent, item 40 is withdrawn by the department. The remaining matters, 41 through 46, will remain on consent. On page eight, items 47 to 51, as well as 53 to 55. On page nine, items 56 to 60. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on consent matters? Matters remain on consent when they are considered routine and non-controversial by county family. If you feel differently, we certainly want to hear about that, so now would be the time to inform the board of your position or provide your input. Okay, seeing none, gonna return to the board and ask for action from my colleagues.
Motion on consent.
Second.
Thank you, David. We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. Is Mr. Carter Beetzley in the house? Are you here? I see you, very good. So, Mr., this is a moment, now that the consent matter has been, consent agenda has been approved, this is an opportunity to highlight one of the matters that was approved on consent today, and if you look at the agenda, item number five under consent is the appointment of Carter Beetzley as a fifth district member to the Housing Authority. I understand, Mr. Beetzley, you have some people here with you, but I want to invite you down to the podium for a moment, if you can introduce yourself to my colleagues. These are the supervisors who have been entrusted with Kern County, Supervisor Chris Parlier, Supervisor Jeff Flores, Supervisor David Couch, and Philip Peters. I'd like you to all meet our new appointee. He's fresh out of high school graduation, if you can believe that, and he is a total rock star in every regard. Operates with integrity, with class, with hard work, and with genuine love and devotion to Kern County in everything I see you do from the time you were this big. So, Mr. Beetzley, if you would like to say a few words, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Carter Beetzley, and I'm so excited to be here, and the newest appointee for the Housing Authority. I know I look young, it's just my sunscreen. Recently, in the news, we saw that Kern County is down 10% in unsheltered homelessness, so we're already making really, really awesome strides, and I just was reading about that yesterday. So, I just want to say that I know I'm young, but this is an issue that I'm excited to be able to bring a fresh perspective to. I'm excited to immediately start working. I have a meeting with the executive director of our Housing Authority tomorrow, and I've been meeting with as many stakeholders as I can, reading through all of the available documents online. It's taking a while, but it's a really interesting topic, housing, so if anyone has some free time and they're bored. But anyway, I'm looking forward to all of the wonderful strides that we're gonna continue to do in Kern County. I'm so proud to call this place my home, and thank you again, Madam Chair, for the appointment, I appreciate it.
Who do you have here with you today, Carter?
If my family wants to come up.
If you would please stand up or come forward, I think that would be fabulous. Wow, wonderful.
I have my mom here on the far right. She's a public school teacher, I take a lot of pride in that. My mom's best friend, who was more like a second mom growing up, Molly Myers, my brother, Jacob, and my sister-in-law Shelby. So these are my support system, and I'm proud to have them with me today.
It is so beautiful to see the community that has raised you, that has prepared you, that has guided you for service by their own actions, and by their love and by accountability, which is so critical. Thank you so much for this young man, he is a gift to this community. I look forward to see the many ways in which he will flourish personally through this process, but the ways in which Kern County will benefit from his contributions. Thank you, God bless you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Carter. Okay, we're gonna move to our resolutions and proclamations portion of the morning, and item number one is to proclaim June 23rd to the 27th, 2025 is National Boys and Girls Club Week in Kern County. This matter will be handled by Supervisor Philip Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds, which is nice, please cast your votes.
Good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues, it's my honor this morning to share this proclamation, proclaiming June 23rd through the 27th, National Boys and Girls Club Week in Kern County. This organization was originally started in 1860, if you can believe it, but for more than 75 years, they've been doing National Boys and Girls Club Week, which gives the community an opportunity to get more involved and see the impact that these clubs have on our youth and on the futures of our community. There's, I believe, over 4 million boys and girls involved in these clubs throughout the United States, and that's in every state, all of our territories, military bases, and here locally, there's over, I want to say 11,000 kids that are served every year through the Boys and Girls Club. So it's really a tremendous organization, they make a huge impact in our community. And so I will let the experts share a little bit more, but first, it's my honor to share this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, have officially proclaimed June 23rd through 27th, 2025, as National Boys and Girls Club Week in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chair, Letitia Perez. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Hello, thank you for having us this morning, and it is my esteemed honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County. My name is Mackenzie Boone, I am board president this year, and then I have this wonderful support system behind me. I mean, you guys would just be floored, our board meetings, our team meetings, these people are incredible, and they, not to tread on any numbers that may have been thrown out, but there's 44,000 kids here in Kern County that we serve. We serve over 1 million meals to these children every year, which is incredible, you know, bridging that gap in nutrition for our kids. We also serve kids from four to 17, so we have expertise in that teen program, and we're always trying to expand those programs. We also have one-to-one ratio for children who have exceptional needs, which is, again, just an incredible step that we've tried to make in preserving the future for our children and just making them stronger members for our county here. So, again, thank you so much, we are so appreciative, what an esteemed honor it is, just to be recognized by all of you, so thank you.
Good to see you, Rob. How long have you been on the board now at Boys and Girls Club? 2010? My goodness, this is an incredible group of people. I grew up at the Boys and Girls Club myself, right on the east side. We got some representation in the house, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, as they're heading out, thank you so much for all you do to your board. You have a very enthusiastic chair, good choice, keep up the good work. Okay, moving along to item number two, that is to proclaim July 2025 as Books in Motion Month, a summer dance and literacy program in Kern County, so cool. This matter will be presented by Supervisor Chris Parlier.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. What a fun morning for these muchachos, how precious. Oh, they are so adorable, my goodness.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and colleagues, and we know I'm not the star of the show today. You see the performers back here, it is just amazing. This morning, the Kern County Board of Supervisors is happy to proclaim 2025 as Books in Motion Month in Kern County. Kern County Libraries has had a longstanding partnership with the Kern Dance Alliance to bring together books, dance, literacy activities to libraries across Kern County during the summer months. As we all know, libraries serve an important role in our communities, and it's important that we do what we can to keep children and families engaged in activity, learning in our libraries. Here to share a few words, Andy Sullivan, Director of Kern County Libraries. And real quick, Andy, I just want to present this proclamation by the Board of Supervisors on this wonderful day, wonderful month, signed by our Honorable Chair, Letitia Perez.
Yay, thank you, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. As you can see, I am not the star either, we have the starlets right behind us. It is summertime, and that means book in motion is back in your libraries. The Library Department and Kern Dance Alliance have partnered for nine years to bring books, dance, and literacy activities to your libraries during the summer reading months, just echoing what Supervisor Parlier just said. The program uses Common Core reading standards to promote healthy living through movement and dance. The program is geared for children in early literacy stages and designed to tap into their imagination and encourage reading with the goal of reducing summer learning loss. This effort has served more than 15,000 participants through literacy-focused programs at the libraries and has given away 10,000 free books. I think that deserves an applause, because that is amazing to help build home libraries. This collaboration has been instrumental in providing essential services to the underserved populations in our communities. Nearly 80% of the participants reported that they have never heard of the book titles that they were given over the summer. That's amazing to me, because a lot of these are classics. 97% of the kids reported that the Books in Motion program inspired them to read, and that is really our purpose. I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact this partnership has had on young children across our county. From rural migrant populations to small mountain communities to bustling valley cities, the reach has been extensive. This is an innovative approach addressing the needs of the most vulnerable, as well as significantly improving the quality of life for those participating. You can't go wrong when a county department fosters a connection to books, reading, literacy, dance, and movement. So now, I will invite Ms. Genevieve from the library to highlight the library's investment with this important
Good morning. Imagine this, you walk into a library, and you're expecting it to be quiet, maybe a couple people on the computers, but instead, you walk into a crowded library packed with kids and families, and they're gathered around a makeshift stage right in the middle of the stacks. And what are they watching? A bunch of dancers, twirling and leaping and acting out a story beat by beat. That is Books in Motion, and it is one of our most joyful and beloved summer programs. It's also a very special partnership between your county library and the Kern Dance Alliance. As Andy said, this summer, we're featuring 12 different dance groups, 48 unique shows, and 32 performances at county library locations. So yes, the library provides the space for Books in Motion, but we also do so much more. Your library team dedicates countless hours to coordinating the tour schedule around each dance group and each library branch. This year, we've also worked to secure alternative locations for branches closed for renovations in Wasco and Delano, ensuring every community has the chance to participate. From scheduling and craft prep to event promotion and onsite support, the library staff pours their time, energy, and passion into every aspect of Books in Motion. This isn't just another event on our calendar. Books in Motion and all the work that goes into planning and carrying out this massive project is a labor of love that brings the library's mission to life, connecting children to stories in a way that inspires joy, creativity, and a lifelong love of reading. So we hope that you, Madam Chair, and the other members of the board, and everyone watching will join us at an upcoming Books in Motion performance, so that you can experience the magic as Books in Motion brings children's stories to life. Kern Dance Alliance has generously provided a video to give you a sneak peek of what you can expect this summer.
This summer, Books in Motion grew by leaps and bounds, where we literally saw the stories jump off the page and onto the stage.
I'm Andrea Hansen, Kern Dance Alliance Executive Director, and this summer, we completed our eighth annual Books in Motion Dance Plus Literacy Program in collaboration with the Kern County Library. This summer, we had 42 performances, serving 20 locations. We saw the increase in attendance jump by 65% from 2023, serving 2,300 kids, to nearly 4,000 coming through the program in 2024. And even more special, because we're intent on increasing the number of books in people's homes, we gave away nearly 2,700 free books, a 167% increase in books given away from last summer to this summer.
My name is Farah Dridia, and I'm the Marketing and Promotions Associate for Kern County Library, and I love the Books in Motion program. Not only do we get to see the books come to life, but kids get to go home with the book to build their at-home library. Books in Motion program was bigger than ever this summer, and we went out to so many library locations with so many performances, but my favorite ones were libraries that we never have gone to before. Having a program like this reach rural areas not only gives them an introduction to the fine arts, but also helps them with their reading success and brings the books to life for them. So research shows that kids lose two years of what they learn during the summer when they're on break, and having them come to the library and attend programs like Books in Motion helps them retain that information and sets them up for academic success for the next school year.
Books in Motion 2024 is not possible without some really amazing partners and sponsors. First, we want to thank the Kern County Library, who has been our presenting partner for the last eight years. Additionally, our media sponsor, 23 ABC. Our local bookstore, Russo's Books, which helps us to deliver thousands of books to the community, as well as the Independent Living Center of Kern County, who has helped us to provide American Sign Language services to our deaf and hard-ear hearing communities. As well as our financial partners, we want to thank the Arts Council of Kern County, the California Arts Council, the Robert Grimm Family Foundation, the Virginian Alfred Harrell Foundation, the Wonderful Company, and Kern Family Healthcare.
Gosh, she's good.
Now I'm going to introduce Ms. Andrea Hansen from the Kern Dance Alliance.
Good morning, supervisors. Thank you so much for the incredible proclamation. Thank you, Madam Chair, for acknowledging us this morning. I'm Andrea, I'm the Executive Director of KDA, and it's a pleasure that I know all of you, and thank you for your incredible support of not just literacy in Kern County, but also the arts. However, I stand before you today to address a critical issue in Kern County. One in four Kern County third graders either cannot read, or they're not at reading level. While the reasons for this are complex, I'm encouraged that community partnerships like Books in Motion are providing solutions to help us solve the very delicate issues we face together as a society. Books in Motion celebrates nine years this summer, and as Andy said, 15,000 children have come through the program, and we have given away nearly 10,000 books to help build home libraries. Last summer's data shows that we're making a difference, just like Andy said, 79% of those participants discovered new books, 91% of them mastered our Common Core questions when related to the program's activities, and 97% reported that they were inspired to read. After nine years of operating this program, we're starting to see the long-term impacts. Families are now reporting that their children are spelling bee champions, and that they're the best readers in their class. Even greater, many of those participants have now shifted to performers. They were inspired to take dance classes and to be involved in the performing arts, and many of them are standing before you here today in costume, they started as participants, and now they're performing, and that's the long-term impacts of this work. While Books in Motion is not the only solution to improving literacy in Kern County, we know it's a vital part to encouraging lifelong learners in Kern County. The arts can show and can spark a love for reading, and their impact goes so far. The arts, specifically Books in Motion, takes the arts beyond the performative status and into the transformative status. We know that children learn best when they are having fun, and Books in Motion is proof of concept. I'm joined today here by our Kern County Library partners, who in the very early years acknowledged that the arts could change the trajectory of literacy in Kern County. I'm also joined by KDA key leaders, including our President Marcy Heronis, Secretary Valerie Hashem, board members Felisa Patino Longoria and Nicole Villaruse, as well as our adaptive program coordinator and director, Micah Steele and Romi Jones, who help us to ensure that the arts are made accessible to every single person in this community regardless of ability. This summer, we are so excited to take over 50 shows on tour throughout the county, and frankly, we don't know of any other program in the county that goes on tour to every community with the intent to improve literacy. And for the first time this summer, we will travel to the Panama Buena Vista Unified School District into their schools to help to use Books in Motion to enhance their summer reading programs. Artists are essential to our community, and we are on track to deliver 6,000 books this summer with their help to students countywide. Books in Motion has employed hundreds of artists, and with our sponsors, we are proud to pay them for their work, because they are helping all of us to build a brighter future in Kern County while also boosting our economy. The arts are the pathway to creativity, ingenuity, and cultural vitality. They strengthen our community's diversity and our economic vitality. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming July as Books in Motion Month and for celebrating the arts in our community. You are all invited to travel to one of those shows, or many, to see the arts come to life and to work together to improve literacy in Kern County. It's an honor to share this moment with you all, and a special thank you to our Books It's an honor to share this moment with you all, and a special thank you to our Books in Motion performers, Sosa creatives, and DAT crew, who are representing two of the 12 artists on tour this summer. Thank you.
So you are the rock star from the video. You are such a natural. Thank you for your passion and everything you do. Absolutely stunning presentation.
Thank you so much. Dancers, would you like to turn around and give the audience some pose or something?
Ah, yeah, I love it. Yeah, show us your goods. Look at those precious little dinosaurs. Oh, yay!
Now, this is fun, Kathy. That's real fun.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Hey, let's get a photo.
Sure. Okay, dancers, let's go around supervisor party.
Such a big crowd.
I know.
And let's get all the, everybody involved. Everybody here.
They are here. So you don't need balancing. Do you want to go straight to it now? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good call. That's smart.
Supervisor Parlee, you're looking a little underdressed in that photo.
It kind of, it has a Shrek feel to it, you know, like the different characters from different genres altogether. I very much felt like Shrek in the supervisors' board chambers today. That's just, that's just fun. That's good stuff. Okay, before we go to public presentations, I'm going to take one matter out of order, and I apologize for any inconvenience, but I do believe that it is a more streamlined approach to the agenda. Supervisor Flores has a matter that he is presenting this morning. I'm going to ask him to do that now, or...
So we're going to take Board Member announcements out of order? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the indulgence, and we'll get to it right now.
Okay, excellent. I understand Bridge Bomby and A.J. Anon are in the house. If you're here, can you please make your way forward? Oh, there you are. Excellent, excellent. I'll be down to join you in a moment, Bridge. Nice to see you, A.J. Good morning and welcome. Looking good, gentlemen.
Good morning. Very special morning, Madam Chair, colleagues. You know, we often hear in Bakersfield these thematic sayings of building a better Bakersfield, the best of Bakersfield, building a better Kern, lead here, lead the world, work here for the good of the people. It's not just government and departments that are doing that, it's the individuals of our community, the businesses of our community. Living testament to this are two outstanding Bakersfield citizens, Dr. Bridge Bomby and A.J. Anon, who personify those themes and more. And so I want to talk about some significant investments that they have made here in Bakersfield, extraordinary because they're extraordinary people. So I'm going to talk a little bit about their background just for understanding, and then move to the proclamation. Dr. Bridge Bomby is a leading interventional cardiologist practicing here in Bakersfield. He's a managing partner of Central Cardiology Medical Center in Centric Health, which is the largest integrated multi-specialty group practice in the Central Valley. Dr. Bomby is also a founding member of the Bakersfield Heart Hospital since 1998, constantly striving for better outcomes in the lives of Kern County by employing the latest interventional techniques and conducting leading-edge research in coronary and vascular heart disease. He's a recipient of numerous awards in the medical field. I'll just name a few: Top Doctors of Southern California, Top Doctors of Los Angeles, Top Doctors in Bakersfield Life, and Physician of the Year for Centric Health in 2017. And, you know, Supervisor Perez, you might remember a couple years ago, Sheriff Youngblood as well, Cynthia Zimmer, they invited us to go down to Los Angeles to the heart of L.A., Wilshire Boulevard, and it was the ambassadors of Bakersfield that went down there. And you should see the accolades, the thanks, how proud we were that night to honor Dr. Bomby. And it wasn't just Bakersfield honoring Dr. Bomby, it was the best of Los Angeles, it was the Cedar Sinai Community, it was the State of Israel was there, diplomats were there, congressional delegations were there, both sides of the aisle came together to honor this man because this man brings people together, he transcends boundaries, and he's a force for positive change. So we thank you. He's a healer, he's a prolific writer, he's a deep thinker. You may have read some of his op-eds. He's a true Renaissance man.
Yes, he is.
He's a hiker, he's hiked Mount Kilimanjaro, which is no small feat. He's an intellectual, but more importantly, he's a servant. He serves, and he's very generous. And just a little quick story before I move on to A.J. Anon. About seven or eight years ago, there was a big Christmas party at Seven Oaks, and, you know, I was just a staffer at the time, I wasn't a supervisor, I didn't know Dr. Bomby, and I was struggling to find a place to sit. And you know, elected officials know this, staff knows this, department heads, business leaders kind of know the nuances of these big events, that the head table is reserved for, you know, maybe a congressman, a CEO, some important person. I didn't have a seat, he didn't know me, he had me sit at the head table, he had me sit next to him. He was so gracious, polite, talked. He sees the person, not the position, and it doesn't matter if you're the waiter serving water or a person serving in Congress, he's a respectful, gracious man, and so thank you for that. Okay, so moving on to A.J. Anon. A.J. Anon, just a few things from his resume. He's a wealth of healthcare business experience, over two decades traversing the entire healthcare spectrum, from building formidable healthcare infrastructure to delivering pioneering care. A.J. Anon has led the development of Centric Health since 2013, clinically-integrated delivery platform in Kern County that specializes in patient-centered healthcare. He has a passion for helping the underprivileged. He's the force behind the A.J. Anon Legacy Foundation, a not-for-profit foundation with a mission to support at-risk youth. And Supervisor Perez, you remember we were at BPAL that they ushered in, a state-of-the-art soccer field, beautiful pitch, beautiful grass, the kids were elated, they had round two, they're doing lighting. He stepped up to the plate with his foundation to attune $1.2 million in this underprivileged area. We talk about how to reduce crime, how to reduce homelessness, how to re-elevate academic outcomes. That's what it takes. Generational investment from the beginning, just like the Boys and Girls Club, just like the Dance Alliance. Those are the things that make a difference, that shape the trajectory of our youth. And you were there, you remember that day vividly, the computer lab, academic learning, fostering that. He's a busy man. He runs hotels, he runs healthcare, but he takes the time to invest in our youth with action and with dollars. So, kind person, servant, gentleman, family man, smart, graceful, and he leads with humility. And so I'm honored to call you a great friend and a great citizen of Kern County, both of you. So lastly, just so you know what they did more on the healthcare front. What we're celebrating is the Dr. Bridge Bomby and Bobby family and the Bomby Heart Foundation have pledged $1.5 million to establish the Bomby Heart and Brain Center at the Thomas M. Heart Tower. Generous gift, part of Dignity Health Southwest facility west of the 99. It's going to help our healthcare outcomes. We don't have to travel to Los Angeles, we have state-of-the-art healthcare here. Significant investment, new cardiac catheterization labs, advanced imaging for the west side of Bakersfield and for all of our citizens. And Mr. A.J. Anon and family and the Anon Family Foundation have pledged $1.2 million to advanced maternity and obstetrics care services at Mercy Hospital. The birth center will be named Anon Family Birth Center, family waiting rooms at the Thomas Heart Tower, and will be named Anon Family Waiting Room. So thank you both, gentlemen, for your significant investment, for being a great citizen and affecting healthcare outcomes in a positive direction. We're truly grateful as a county and as a community, so thank you. And I have two proclamations from our entire board presented to each of you for those significant investments, to honor your generous philanthropy and establishment of the Bomby Heart Brain Center, Thomas M. Heart Tower, and for exemplary public services and civic contributions to the community of Kern County, signed by all five of our members and our chairman.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words? And one to Dr., I mean, A.J. Anon and family and Anon Legacy Foundation, in honor and recognition of your generous philanthropy and establishment of the Anon Family Birth Center, Mercy Hospital, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community of Kern County, signed by all five members and our chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Madam Chair, Supervisors, it's an honor to be here. When I graduated from Cedars in 1992, the best compliment I ever received was from a director. He said, "There's no work beneath Bridge Bomby," and I tried to live up to that adoration. When I came to Bakersfield in 1992, I saw the healthcare system here, and I thought it could use an upgrade. So that was the notion behind creating the Heart Hospital. At the time, I think it's true even now, that a certificate of need was necessary to confirm that another hospital could have a place in Bakersfield. So I remember these chambers, I used to come here in the early '90s to mid-'90s to have, to present my case that Bakersfield needs a new hospital. We faced headwinds from the existing powers that be, but I was elated that our logic, our rationale had meaning and substance, that board agreed with us, and we got the certificate of need. So I am thankful to the board at the time and the tradition that you continue, when you see merit, you go for it and you approve it. So I want to thank you for an act of charity that you did for me for 25 years, for 25 years ago. Bakersfield Heart Hospital existed as a monument, it was a temple of feeling, it was center of excellence. We were in the top 10% of the country in healthcare, heart, cardiovascular care for 25 years. So recently, the flags have changed, but the hospital continues to serve the community. In life, the blessing of life, the most important asset is health. It's my privilege to be in healthcare, to provide services. To quote Portia from Merchant of Venice, "The quality of mercy is twice blessed. It blesses the one who receives, it blesses the one who gives." To paraphrase Shakespeare, "Healing empowers both the sick and the healer." So it's been my privilege to be in healthcare and to work and continue to elevate the healthcare. Supervisor Flores has been very kind in his detailed, and I must confess, very generous brief biography, and I thank you very much for the honor. Appreciate it. Morning, Madam Chair, distinguished supervisors. All need notes, I can't match Dr. Bomby's eloquence and history combined with the literature of Shakespeare and more.
He sets the bar very high.
Very high. I'm deeply honored to be recognized by a dear friend, Supervisor Jeff Flores, and the members of the board. BPAL, as some of you know, you've visited the place, is now a revitalized center which serves children across the city, offering a safe and inspiring space for them to grow, learn, and play. Our mission is to support at-risk youth and provide opportunities that can transform their futures. We are very honored to support Mercy Southwest Hospital's Thomas Heart Tower expansion and help extend advanced healthcare to families across Kern County. It is a privilege for our family to be part of Sisters of Mercy and Mercy Hospital's legacy of over a century, a legacy of hope, healing, and unconditional love. As a family with immense gratitude for God's blessings, our family embraces the privilege of giving back, giving back to the communities that have greatly shaped our lives. Our faith has always guided us to believe that life's greatest gifts and blessings lie in the opportunities we get to support others, uplift our communities, and to leave something meaningful for future generations. Thank you once again for your recognition and honor. Also, I would like to recognize your continued support. Like Dr. Bomby said, 25 years ago, this board supported one of the most important decisions to bring advanced cardiac care to Kern County, and the legacy still continues through this present board. Thank you very much.
Will the Board of Supervisors come down and join us for a group photo real quick? Love to have you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. We have a, while my colleagues are headed back to their seats, I have the privilege to contribute a few thoughts to what was really an extraordinary rendition of Bridge and A.J. and just a fraction of the contributions they have made to Kern County. You know, recently, I had the opportunity to write a couple of cards to A.J. and Bridge a few weeks ago, and I had an opportunity to think about the moment in which I met Bridge because it is seared in my memory, and it is becoming core memory of mine as it was such a transformative moment for me. Right across the street, at the Bell Tower Club, or as it was called then, nearly a decade and a half ago, I sat down with Bridge and Michael Rubio as we broke bread, as we talked about the future, as we planned for the present, and we dreamed so big together as a family, as friends, as people from all different walks and corners of this globe. We sat there as friends, and I will never forget those moments because Bridge was so clear, he was so sincere, and he was so serious about growing great leadership in Kern County. He was so serious about friendship, he was so serious about investing. In this case, unknown east sider, without much privilege or money or opportunity to really compete in Kern County politics. Bridge changed that. He brought me into his world, he introduced me to A.J., to their beautiful families, their children, their communities, and we spent countless hours, countless hours, breaking bread, sharing wine, and talking very deeply about ourselves and about the world and our hopes and dreams as Americans for this great country and opportunities afforded to us unlike anywhere on the globe. I don't really have the words to convey how I feel about Bridge and, of course, A.J., but the impact that they have had on my life truly changed the course of my life. Their perspective of politics globally and down to the molecular level is unmatched. The sophistication that Bridge Bomby brings...
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Vice Chair Couch, appreciate you. We are going to move on then to the next agenda item, which are items number nine and 10, and we're going to hear them concurrently. Number nine is a proposed memorandum of agreement, MOU, with Uber Technologies, containing non-standard terms and conditions for authorization to operate ride-sharing services at the William M. Thomas Terminal. Number 11 is proposed memorandum, MOU, with Lyft, for the same reasons. We are joining the 21st century, it appears. So it looks like our airport staff or staff is geared up and ready to go, or if not, I would ask you to come on down. Please make your way to the staff tables and get ready to make your presentation. Who will lead this morning? Oh, we're okay, so we're going to just watch you as you mosey on down to the staff table or to the podium. Okay, here we are. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Muska, the interim Airport Director.
Hi, Michael.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
We're delighted to welcome, to re-welcome Lyft and to a new welcome to Uber to the airport to provide ride-share services through ride-share apps. Just to explain a little bit about any possible fiscal impact to the airport, I know there was a little bit of concern about whether it would affect any parking revenue. So just to go through the numbers real quick, the annual airport revenue from parking is about 1.3 million. The annual airport revenue from Lyft alone was only at 23,000, so that's less than 2% of the total revenue of the of parking and ride-share combined. So the new agreement with both Lyft and Uber, let me just say, the previous agreement was for $2 per pickup only. The new agreement with both of the ride-share companies will be $3 per passenger pickup and $3 per drop-off. So we're not only increasing it, but doubling the the revenue as it comes and goes. So we're delighted they're coming here. Increased revenue, better services, and more convenience, and it's what our passengers have asked for.
Wow. Well, thank you for responding to the needs of the consumers and to doing that creatively and for your presentation. We may have some more questions for you. I'll let you know in a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on Uber, Lyft, and their and this proposed MOUs with both of them respectively? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing portion then and return to the board for question, comments, and action. I believe that we're going to handle them separately on the vote, so while we have heard both concurrently, nine and 10 will be handled separately, please.
Motion on nine.
Second.
We have a motion on item number nine and a second. Please cast your votes. Sorry, Jeff.
Thank you. The motion is approved. All eyes.
Excellent. And of course, very similarly, number 10, as it relates to Lyft.
Motion item 10.
Second.
Motion and second on item 10. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate. Hope that goes well. Okay, moving on to the next items, we're going to hear items 11 and 28 concurrently because they're related. We'll vote on them separate like we just did on airports, but we are going to hear a presentation on them similarly to move the agenda along, and these items, of course, are related to one another and will help us understand the full comprehensive picture better. So item 11 is a response to April 29, 2025, board response to present an update on the Animal Services Department, services provided, and of course, item number 28, very excitingly, is the proposed funding alternatives for the construction of our new animal facility, which is such a dream come true. So woo-hoo, yeah. Thank you. It's very exciting. So as to items number 11 and 28, we're going to hear them concurrently, vote separately, but they are teed up, and I see staff is in place. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Nick Cullen, your Director for Animal Services. The presentation I'll be delivering today, which is extemporaneous, I prepared my remarks as opposed to what some of the brilliant folks did this morning, but the presentation I'll be delivering today is in response to Supervisor Parley's request for an update on the Animal Services Department, including the services that we provide, the challenges we're currently facing, and the needs we anticipate moving forward. What you're about to see is more than just numbers on the screen.
I would like to remind the board that you and the union will enter negotiations again in 2026, and the board needs to act in the best interest of all its constituents. As you work on the preliminary budget for the next fiscal year, really consider if the way y'all have divided up the money in the last few years is benefiting all communities. Maybe take a particular look at your lack of investment in education compared to your investment in public protection. There have to be more efficient and considerate ways to use the money we have in order to meet the goals that y'all try to set. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, ma'am chair and board. Under the Immigration and Nationality Act-
Can I get your name, sir?
Ron Barter.
Thank you.
Under the Immigration and Nationality Act, INA, Congress specifically permits state and local law enforcement officers to assist federal officials in enforcing immigration law. No federal law, however, allows state or local officials to subvert or ignore requirements of the INA. In fact, federal law imposes significant criminal and civil penalties on those who do so. The INA specifically preempts state and local restrictions on local officials' communications with DHS. It states, notwithstanding any other provisions of federal, state, or local law, a federal, state, or local government entity or official not prohibit or in any way restrict any government entity or official from sending to or receiving from DHS information regarding the citizenship or immigration status, lawful or unlawful, of any individual. The Supreme Court explained, "There is no doubt that Congress may withdraw specific powers from the state by enacting a statute containing an express preemption provision." Congress did exactly that in Section 1373 of the INA. Therefore, sanctuary policies forbidding state or local officials from communicating with DHS are unlawful. Concealing, harboring, or shielding aliens is a federal crime. By complying with your jurisdiction, sanctuary law, or policies, you and subordinates appear to be engaging in criminal action and potentially subjecting one implementing those policies to punishment. This is because anyone who conceals, harbors, or shields from detection of an alien who has come to, entered, or remains in the United States is a violation of law, or who attempts to do so is committing a federal crime if the person knew or acted in reckless disregard of the alien's unlawful presence or entrance in the United States. It is also a crime to aid and abet the above violations or to engage in conspiracy to commit them. The penalty for any of the above crimes is five years imprisonment per alien involved.
Thank you, Mr. Barter. Morning, Dennis.
Dennis McLean, M.C., capital L-E-A-N. Madam Chairman, supervisors, and staff, thank you for listening to my concerns. Because your jurisdiction's sanctuary laws or policies usually require multiple officials to coordinate their activities, all such officials could be criminally liable under multiple federal criminal conspiracy statutes. Additionally, it is a crime carrying a penalty up to 20 years imprisonment for anyone who knowingly engages in misleading conduct toward another person with intent to cause or induce any person to be absent from an official proceeding to which such person has been summoned by legal process, or to hinder, delay, or prevent the communication to a law enforcement officer or a judge of the United States. In closing, please have your election department coordinate with the Department of Homeland Security to verify citizenship of voters on our county voter rolls. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there any other public comment this morning? If so, now's the time. Please come down. State your name for the record. Okay, looks like we are done with public comment. Thank you very much. We're moving to board member announcements or reports. We did that already, all of it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Vice Chair Couch, appreciate you. We are going to move on then to the next agenda item, which are items number nine and 10, and we're going to hear them concurrently. Number nine is a proposed memorandum of agreement, MOU, with Uber Technologies, containing non-standard terms and conditions for authorization to operate ride-sharing services at the William M. Thomas Terminal. Number 11 is Proposed Memorandum, MOU, with Lyft, for the same reasons. We are joining the 21st century, it appears. So it looks like our airport staff or staff is geared up and ready to go, or if not, I would ask you to come on down. Please make your way to the staff tables and get ready to make your presentation. Who will lead this morning? Oh, okay, so we're gonna just watch you as you mosey on down to the staff table. Or to the podium. Okay, here we are. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Muska, the interim airport director.
Hi, Michael.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
We're delighted to welcome, to re-welcome Lyft and to a new welcome to Uber, to the airport, to provide ride-share services through RideShare apps. Just to explain a little bit about any possible fiscal impact to the airport, I know there was a little bit of concern about whether it would affect any parking revenue. So just to go through the numbers real quick, the annual airport revenue from parking is about 1.3 million. The annual airport revenue from Lyft alone was only at 23,000, so that's less than 2% of the total revenue of the, of parking and ride-share combined. So the new agreement with both Lyft and Uber, let me just say, the previous agreement was for $2 per pickup only. The new agreement with both of the ride-share companies will be $3 per passenger pickup and $3 per drop-off. So we're not only increasing it, but doubling the revenue as it comes and goes. So we're delighted they're coming here. Increased revenue, better services, and more convenience, and it's what our passengers have asked for.
Wow. Well, thank you for responding to the needs of the consumers and to doing that creatively and for your presentation. We may have some more questions for you. I'll let you know in a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on Uber, Lyft, and their, and this proposed MOUs with both of them respectively? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing portion then and return to the board for question, comments, and action. I believe that we're gonna handle them separately on the vote, so while we have heard both concurrently, nine and 10 will be handled separately, please.
Motion on nine.
Second.
We have a motion on item number nine and a second. Please cast your votes. Sorry, Jeff.
Thank you. The motion is approved. All eyes.
Excellent. And of course, very similarly, number 10, as it relates to Lyft.
Motion item 10.
Second.
Motion and second on item 10, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate, I hope that goes well. Okay, moving on to the next items, we're gonna hear items 11 and 28 concurrently because they're related. We'll vote on them separate like we just did on airports, but we are gonna hear a presentation on them similarly to move the agenda along, and these items, of course, are related to one another and will help us understand the full comprehensive picture better. So item 11 is a response to April 29, 2025, Board Response to Present an Update on the Animal Services Department Services Provided. And of course, item number 28, very excitingly, is the proposed finding alternatives for the construction of our new animal facility, which is such a dream come true. So woo-hoo, yeah. Thank you. It's very exciting. So as to items number 11 and 28, we're gonna hear them concurrently, vote separately, but they are teed up, and I see staff is in place. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Nick Cullen, your Director for Animal Services. The presentation I'll be delivering today, which is extemporaneous, I prepared my remarks as opposed to what some of the brilliant folks did this morning, but the presentation I'll be delivering today is in response to Supervisor Parley's request for an update on the Animal Services Department, including the services that we provide, the challenges we're currently facing, and the needs we anticipate moving forward. What you're about to see is more than just numbers on the screen. It's a reflection of some real challenges that we're facing in real time, and these trends show us not just where we are, but how we got here, and more importantly, what we're doing to respond. You'll see what services we have expanded. You'll see where we've made progress. You'll see where we still have some needs. But above all, my goal today is to highlight that this is a systemic issue, and that if we're gonna solve it, we have to do it together with community, with collaboration, and with long-term investment in some real solutions. So this first slide, it's important to understand that shelter intake and population trends are not isolated. They're a reflection of what's happening in our community. Just like a sudden spike in emergency room visits signals a broader public health concern, a sustained rise in shelter intake is a clear indicator of increasing pet population pressures in our community. The opposite is also true. A sustained decline in shelter intake over time typically reflects progress in population control, in access to care, and preventative interventions that are working at a community level. This slide here illustrates our total annual dog intake over the past 10 calendar years. The blue dotted line marks our previous high-water mark, the highest number of dogs received in any single year during that period. In 2024, we surpassed that mark, taking in 9,856 dogs through county shelters. That's approximately 6.5% higher than our previous peak and represents a 31% increase compared to the last pre-pandemic year, 2019. What makes this trend especially difficult is that from 2014 through the end of 2019, we had made steady progress, achieving an 18.7% reduction in total dog intake through small incremental improvements year over year, and that progress has now been not only erased, but reversed in just a few short years. This next slide shows the number of puppies, and by puppies, we're referring to dogs under the age of five months. So that line that's on your screen right now, that is the monthly puppy intake for That orange line there is the monthly puppy intake for 2018. This is 2019. That's 2020, so in the pandemic, you know, we closed our doors for about four months, so you see the decrease in puppy intake. That's 2021. And then in 2022, we start seeing a sharp increase in the amount of puppies coming into county shelters. By 2023, we're seeing unprecedented numbers, and then by 2024, we're exceeding what we saw in 2023. So this age group has become the primary driver behind the overall increase in dog intake. In 2019, we took in 1,769 dogs, and by 2024, that number had more than doubled, reaching 3,609. That represents a 104% increase in just five years. It's an unmistakable signal that more puppies are being born and entering our system than ever before. This next slide shows the average daily dog population at all county shelters at key points since 2017. The orange line that goes across the middle, that represents what we consider to be a safe capacity for dogs at the Fruitvale Animal Shelter. As overall intake has increased, which is largely a result of community-based dog reproduction, our shelter has operated well beyond capacity for the past three years, as you can see. At times, we've housed two to three times the number of dogs that the facility was designed for. What the previous two slides showed in terms of intake, both overall and among puppies, directly translates into the capacity issues that are reflected here. This slide is the operational manifestation of that intake pressure. When more dogs enter the system than we can safely house, it creates a cascading set of challenges that strain every aspect of department operations. Sustaining a population that far exceeds capacity creates some serious operational challenges. One of the most immediate is a rapid transmission of respiratory illness, which spreads more easily when multiple dogs are housed in a single kennel. The more dogs that we keep in an effort to avoid euthanasia, the more we increase the risk of illness, and with that, the cost of medical treatment, the staff workload, and the length of stay. This next slide shows some field-related metrics. It's field-related data trends over the past seven years. It's important to point out that Animal Services not only operates two animal shelters in the county of Kern, but we also deploy field enforcement officers, and they respond to a wide range of community calls involving animals. The trends that we observe inside our shelter walls are not isolated. They're often just one part of a broader picture of what's happening across the community. The five categories that are shown here, they reflect different types of calls received and responded to by our officers. The bottom blue line is the total amount of field activities that were responded to by animal control. We're 10% more calls received in 2024 than at any point in history. The next line above that is the amount of calls that we've received and responded to for deceased animals in the roadway, 7% more than we received at any high point in any calendar year. The next line is the stray reports. That's the amount of calls that we respond to for somebody just contacting us and saying that there's a stray dog in their neighborhood. We've seen a 7% increase, sorry, 16% increase in the total amount of stray dogs being reported. The next line, which is the light blue line, that is the amount of calls reporting abandoned pets. And what we, when we refer to abandoned pets, we're talking about reports of animals that are left behind at properties that have been vacated, often with no care being provided. We've seen a 22% increase in the amount of abandonment calls above any year on record. The last line up at the top is the purple line, and that is the amount of bites that are being reported, bites to humans from dogs, and we've seen a 22% increase of the reported bites in our community. In 2024, we experienced historical highs in all five of those categories. The percentage is shown on the right. Like I said, they represent how much higher each category is compared to its previous peak. Of particular note, we responded to 22% more dog bites and 22% more abandonment cases than at any time in recent memory. That reflects the increasing challenges that's occurring in our neighborhoods and the growing demand on our field personnel to respond to them as well. So what we're seeing is a clear and sustained increase in the number of dogs in our community. That's not just reflected in the volume of animals that are entering our shelters. It's echoed in the number of field calls that we're responding to, and it's visible to a lot of the folks in this room. The question then is, why? What's driving the surge? In the next few slides, I'll walk through some of the root causes that I believe are contributing to the challenges that we're facing. So this next slide, it's a chart that shows the three-year combined spay-neuter surgery trends across 212 spay-neuter clinics across the country in various locations. This is from a research study that was published in the journal Frontiers of Veterinary Science. There's a piece of software that manages these spay-neuter clinics, and they started collecting data in 2019, and they kept it through 2021. You'll see the red dotted line with the sharp decrease. That's the nationwide, in those 212 clinics, volume of spay-neuter surgeries that were being accomplished by those 212 clinics. We've seen by this line, a 22% decrease in the amount of spay-neuter surgeries being completed in March of 2020, 80% decrease in April, 39% decrease in May, and nationwide, we returned back to normal levels by July of 2020. A total of 190,818 fewer surgeries occurred between January of 2020 and December of 2021 nationwide. That's relative to the 2019 baseline. So if we extrapolate nationwide, that implies that over 2.7 million pet sterilizations were missed across the United States in that time period. If we adjust for our population here in Kern, our proportional share would be between 7,000 and 8,000 pets in our county that did not get spayed or neutered that otherwise would have. And a very conservative estimate for the number of puppies and kittens that were produced as a result of those lost surgeries is about 14,000 puppies that were produced in that time, and kittens. This next slide, it's highlighting that access to care is a concern, and it does contribute significantly to all of what I'm touching on this morning. And by access to care, I mean the ability of a pet owner to obtain and make use of veterinary services when they're needed. That means availability. Is there even a veterinary clinic available within a reasonable distance? I was out in Boron, I think, last week, and the folks in Boron are looking at a 90-minute drive to get to veterinary care, and it's, that's during normal business hours. If it's after hours, they're looking at two hours to drive into Bakersfield. That also means affordability. Can people even afford the care? This slide here is based on a study that was performed by the company CareCredit. The average cost in California, if your dog has cancer, is $4,100. If your dog eats something that it shouldn't and it needs to be extracted, you're looking at $3,500 on average. A broken bone is on average $2,700 to address. Cruciate ligament tear will run you about $2,500. Even an X-ray on its own will cost about $240, and that's without an exam fee. Now, I don't point this out to criticize the clinics. I talk about the, I'm talking about the reality that we have two of the poorest congressional districts in the United States that's banned Kern County, and owning a pet responsibly is more costly than it ever has been at any point in history. This next slide is looking locally, and it only focuses on elective veterinary care, specifically spay and neuter. The average cost in Kern County to have a female, medium-sized dog spayed was $435 in 2023, $522 in 2024, and $503 in 2025. So those are a few of the larger contributors to the increase that we're seeing in the pet population, and these next few slides will talk about what we're doing to try to address the crisis. In 1973, approximately 13.5 million pets were euthanized in animal shelters across the United States, and in 2019, it was 1.5 million. The single most important driver of reduced pet overpopulation and shelter euthanasia over the past five decades is the high level of spay-neuter that has been achieved. The nationwide rise in subsidized spay-neuter across the country has helped enormously. Over the past 10 years, your board has appropriated over $3.7 million to support access to spay-neuter services, and that has netted over 42,000 spay-neuter surgeries in that time. As you can see on this graph, when we began to see the concerning trends in fiscal year 21, 22, the funding for spay-neuter increased correspondingly. In fiscal year 24, 25, which is this current fiscal year, your board has committed over $1.1 million in spay-neuter funding, and that includes a half a million dollars in Measure K funding. Kern County Animal Services will finish this fiscal year working with community partners to provide for the sterilization of over 9,500 community pets. In a typical month, we're providing anywhere from six to as many as 15 mobile spay-neuter clinics all throughout the county. County residents can sign up for a clinic by going to kerncountyanimalservices.org/spayneuter or by scanning the QR code that's seen on your screen here. The spay-neuter program that we operate is a $0 out-of-pocket cost for people in, for residents residing in targeted areas. That's 93305, 93306, 93307, and 93308. The reason why it's targeted is because about 65% of all the dogs that come into county shelters come from those four ZIP codes. Anybody outside of those ZIP codes, their max out-of-pocket cost is $20 to get their pet fixed. We allow a max of four appointments per household. We do require pets to be between the ages of two months and seven years, and the pets must be in good overall health. This next slide, in 2022, thanks to an ongoing grant obtained through the Petco Love Foundation, Animal Services began offering no-cost dog and cat vaccinations at all clinics to any pet owner regardless of jurisdiction. In 2023, another grant-funded project began providing no-cost microchips to pets owned by county residents. We understand that so many pets in our community do not see a veterinarian regularly, and often, these clinics are one of the only times, if not the only time, that someone's pet may see a veterinary professional. Our team is going out to all stretches of the county to deliver vaccination clinics: Lamont, Inyo Kern, Lake Isabella, Tehachapi, Frazier Park, Arvin, Boron, Mojave, Shaft or Taft. They're all on our list of locations throughout the county that we attempt to visit every year. By the end of this calendar year, Animal Services will have provided direct services to over 7,500 community pets, or about double the volume of services that we were providing in 2022. At these vaccine clinics, vaccinations to protect your dog from parvo and distemper are provided at no cost to all pet owners. Feline vaccinations are no cost as well. Pet microchips are no cost to unincorporated Kern County residents, and the legally required rabies vaccination is just $10. For a schedule of upcoming vaccine clinics, please scan the barcode that you see here. We do typically serve all clients that show up at these clinics, and there's no need for an appointment. This is actually a little bit of good news. The chart here shows us the percentage of all animals received that Animal Services staff and volunteers have succeeded in finding homes for. That's contrasted against the total number of pets euthanized. The orange line that's trending mostly upward is the percentage of animals saved, and the blue line mostly trending downward is the number of pets euthanized. I think the most important thing to acknowledge here is that even amidst relentless intake numbers, our staff and our volunteers have managed to still set a historical record of saving 78% of all the pets that received, that are received at county shelters. That is a direct result of the hard work, the collaboration, and the fantastic dedication of the staff and volunteers at Kern County Animal Services. 78% isn't our goal. It's not where we want to be, but I did want to acknowledge our staff and volunteers for their hard work. Some of the other programs that we've had to develop in response to the rise in intake are our Streets of Bakersfield program. Our Streets of Bakersfield program, it's a doggy day out program. It's become an increasingly critical tool in dealing with this sharp rise in intake. For the past three years, we've averaged sending out 25 dogs twice per month, totaling more than 1,800 total individual outings. In a system that's overwhelmed by intake and limited by staffing, the volunteer-driven program helps us market animals in ways that traditional sheltering just can't. By getting dogs out into the community, into parks, into neighborhoods, into local businesses, we create visibility, we generate organic social media content, and we allow potential adopters to see dogs outside of the stressful kennel environment. At a time when we can't individually promote every dog, Streets of Bakersfield gives them a story, it gives them a platform, and most importantly, it gives them a chance. If you can participate in our Streets of Bakersfield program, more information can be found at kerncountyanimalservices.org, click on the How to Help button, select Streets of Bakersfield from the dropdown menu, or you can scan the QR code that's seen here. As our kennels became increasingly overcrowded, it became clear that in-shelter adoptions were not keeping pace with the rise in dog intake. Rather than wait for the public to come to us, we made the decision to bring adoptable animals to them. For the past three years, our off-site adoption program has placed Kern County Animals staff, Animal Services staff, and volunteers at community events and partnering businesses every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday by meeting people where they are at, at retail stores, at farmers' markets, at local businesses. We're not only increasing visibility for the animals, but we're also reaching adopters who may never have considered visiting the shelter. We're always in search of new partners to bring adoptable shelter pets to, and if you're a business in Kern County and have the space to host our team, we'd be happy to have a chat. You can email us at animalservices@kerncounty.com for more info, or you can scan the QR code that's seen here. This next slide, as intake has surged over the past few years, we've had to expand our foster care program to meet the moment, and it is making a measurable difference. In 2024, we've placed 2,224 animals into foster homes, the highest number in our agency's history. In this chart, we can see the total number of pets placed in foster homes represented by the purple line and the total number of pets euthanized represented by the green line. Foster caregivers have become an essential extension of our shelter. They're helping relieve space. They're reducing stress for animals. They're creating better outcomes. But just as importantly, the increase in foster placements has a direct correlation to the decrease in euthanasia.
Right.
In a time when our shelter is consistently overcapacity, every foster home quite literally creates room for us to say yes to the next animal. If you can foster a dog or a cat, or more likely, a litter of puppies or kittens nowadays, I encourage you to sign up to be a foster with Kern County Animal Services. You can scan the QR code right on this slide, or you can just email our team at catfoster@kerncounty.com or dogfoster@kerncounty.com. The challenges that we face in animal welfare, especially in a county as large and as diverse as Kern, are far too complex for any single agency to solve alone. Sustainable progress requires deep and ongoing collaboration with both animal welfare organizations and adjacent community agencies. Whether it's affordable veterinary care, or low-income pet owners, social services, housing, mental health, public safety, the root causes that lead someone to abandon a pet often begin months or even years before the moment the animal ends up at our shelter, or the animal ends up on the side of a road, or the animal ends up in an orchard. or the animal ends up on the side of a road, or the animal ends up in an orchard. If we want to prevent intake and abandonment and not just manage the problem after, we need to understand the circumstances behind those decisions. What failed, what resources were missing, and what support could have kept that animal in that home? The only way to answer those questions is by working directly with the community, to listen, to identify gaps, and to design solutions together. The Kern SAFE Coalition, SAFE stands for Saving Animals from Euthanasia, is a growing coalition of public and private organizations that are committed to a unified approach to animal welfare. Through Kern SAFE, they are building cross-agency partnerships that address not just the symptom, abandonment, but the underlying issues, the lack of veterinary access, housing insecurity, behavioral challenges, and a whole lot more. The city of Bakersfield has also begun an organization, organizing a coalition that they are calling the Critters Coalition that seeks to accomplish much of the same. Kern County Animal Services has a seat at both of these collaborative endeavors. Collaboration isn't a side strategy, it is the strategy, because the only way that we meaningfully reduce the intake in euthanasia is by preventing the crisis before it begins. If there are businesses, if there are veterinary clinics, if there are community leaders that would like to collaborate with the Kern SAFE Coalition, you can find more information at kernsafe.org, or you can scan the QR code that's on your screen here. This graph highlights the clear impact of a policy decision that we made in 2021. We decided to stop offering owner surrender services for individuals that no longer were able to care for their pets. That decision, though made with the intent to preserve limited shelter space, it had an unintended and measurable effect. In 2021, the trend lines for animals picked up by animal control officers, which is the orange line up top on this screen here, and the trend line for animals brought in from the public as strays, which is the blue line in the middle, significantly diverged in 2021 from the green line, which is the amount of pets that were surrendered to us voluntarily. This suggests that when people lose the ability to legally and transparently surrender a pet that they can no longer care for, many of those animals still enter the system just under different labels. In effect, pets that may have been voluntarily surrendered in the past are now being reported as strays either intentionally or after being abandoned in the community. This data here reinforces the idea that if we remove a safety valve, like owner surrender, without replacing it with robust intervention or support, the animals still come in just under more difficult and often less humane circumstances. Beginning next month, Animal Services will resume offering voluntary surrender services on a limited basis. Additionally, we're working towards developing a new, previously nonexistent service to our community that will offer end-of-life services for owned pets. I've spent some time outlining the current challenges for Animal Services and the programs that we've developed or expanded to help address those challenges, and I'll finish off my presentation by just touching on a few of the needs of Animal Services. At Animal Services, we've built vital programs over the years that not only create pathways out of the shelter for animals, but that also extends meaningful services and resources to our pet-owning community. Over the past 12 years, we've made steady, deliberate changes to our staffing structure, and we've introduced specialized classifications like program technicians who are dedicated to administering and supporting some of these life-saving programs. Much of this evolution stems from our agency's transformation from what was once a traditional catch-and-kill model to one focused on progressive humane outcomes. And as we continue to move away from the outdated identity and embrace a more modern community-centered mission, it becomes increasingly clear that our staffing model must continue to evolve to meet the demands of a truly lifesaving organization. Veterinary staff. To put it plainly, our veterinarian, Dr. King, that's her in the middle there, she has her hands full, her and her team. In addition to performing spay-neuter surgeries on more than 100 pets every week, that's 112 on average every week, she's also responsible for the ongoing medical care of up to 450 animals. Expanding our medical team would not only enhance the quality and capacity of care we provide to shelter animals, but it would also help lay the foundation for a broader veterinary service that could eventually be offered to the community. To meaningfully address the rising intake of animals in Kern County, we do need to invest in the people that are working on the front lines of the crisis. That's our animal control officers. Officers are needed to improve response times, particularly in the outlying and underserved areas of our county. With more officers, we could be more visible, more proactive in our communities. We can address issues before they become major, and our field staff also being at a greater capacity means that we have a better chance of investigating cruelty and neglect cases, safely recovered injured or aggressive animals, support law enforcement during emergencies, provide critical services like bite quarantines and law and leash law enforcement. But our officers are more than just reactive responders, they're a vital part of the public safety and prevention infrastructure. Our public education and enforcement team is at its core, a group dedicated to going door-to-door in our community to share information about available pet resources. We found that when this canvassing is done strategically, the neighbor, in the neighborhood specifically, that data shows are disproportionately contributing to pet populations, it becomes one of the most effective ways to reach people directly. Providing dedicated staff for this work ensures that existing resources are funneled to the household that need them most, and that increases the likelihood that those services will actually be used. The last need that I'll touch on is the Fruitvale facility. Our Fruitvale facility, the Animal Services home, is a present-day necessity to be replaced. It was originally designed as a temporary solution to an immediate relocation need. The current facility is outdated, it is overcrowded, and it is structurally ill-suited to meet the volume and the complexity of the challenges that we now face. The plan that has been developed for a replacement facility aims to expand capacity to modernize care and provide adequate space for medical treatment, adoptions, and community engagement. A new shelter would not just relieve pressure on an overburdened system, it would allow us to implement more proactive, more preventive strategies, much of the things that we've discussed here today. That does conclude my remarks, and with that, I believe the county administrative office would like to make some remarks on financial planning and potential funding options related to the new animal shelter.
Thank you for an excellent, thorough, comprehensive presentation, Nick. Thank you so much. I really appreciate what you do, brother. Thank you. CAO Flores, yours.
Madam Flores, would you please show the presentation? There we go.
Good morning, members of the board. Elsa Martinez, your Assistant County Administrative Officer. I join your Director of Animal Services, Nick Cullen, to present an important update and seek your guidance on the next steps for a critical project within our community, the replacement of the shelter facility for Animal Services. As Mr. Cullen stated, since 2013, our county Animal Services Department has been operating out of the facility on Fruitvale Avenue. This arrangement was born out of necessity after the city of Bakersfield ended its agreement, leaving us to find a new location quickly to continue providing essential services. So as you can see in this picture, unfortunately, the temporary shelter was not designed to meet the needs of the animal or staff, resulting in operational and safety challenges that have persisted over years. County staff continued to develop options for a long-term solution. And due to the complexities of developing a new facility, as well as economic challenges, including the loss of discretionary revenue due to the reduction of property taxes from oil and gas, it has taken longer than originally anticipated to reach this stage. As you can clearly see in the pictures, the existing facility is not an animal shelter. It lacks adoption areas, staff and operational spaces are limited, and more importantly, it does not include the H-back system that a shelter should have. So after extensive collaboration among county departments and mindful of taxpayer resources, we have reached a critical moment. We now have a detailed schematic design for a modern, secure, and humane shelter that will serve lost, stray, neglected, and abused animals in Kern County. This facility will include improved health and safety features and onsite capabilities to support the well-being of both animals and our staff. So notably, on May 7, 2024, your board approved the acquisition of 4.5 acres of land specifically designed for this project. We are currently on track to move forward with construction management and design building contracts, aiming to begin construction on mid-2026. And although we have been planning for this stage, construction costs have escalated to the point that set aside is not sufficient to cover the estimated cost of construction. For this reason, the county administrator recommends a funding strategy combining three sources, including new debt financing to cover an estimated $60 million project cost. And today, we are seeking your direction and approval to proceed with the funding plan so we can continue advancing this vital project to the benefit of our community. One point I want to make sure is important that your board is aware that a new facility also requires additional maintenance and operational resources. So as part of our financing plan, we will be working with your director to determine those needs. So now I'm going to have Senior Fiscal and Policy Analyst Kayla Rayala to review the financing options for your board.
Chair, members of the board, as Ms. Martinez indicated, the county administrative office is seeking direction and approval from your board to develop a funding plan comprised of three key sources: available general fund cash, the county's tobacco endowments, and external debt financing. The first recommended source is available general fund cash. In anticipation of these and other similar expenditures, the county has been contributing to the general fund designation for capital projects. This designation currently has a balance of 30 million available for use. However, we will not be recommending all of it for this project as we have other projects coming in the near future that will need it as well. Use of this option for a portion of the cost will help keep overall expenses lower as there are no financing issuances or other external funding costs involved. The second recommended source is going out to markets for external financing. The county has successfully used both direct private placement loans and public market offerings for previous transactions and projects, and we would repeat that general process here. To pursue this option, the county would first have to engage with the municipal advisor and legal and disclosure council to assess market conditions and develop a financing plan. Selection of this option does not encumber the county in any way at this time, as any financing transactions would come back before your board at a later time for discussion and approval, and those plans would include very specific details for amounts and dates. This option provides funding flexibility to the county as the impact of the general fund is spread out over the life of the debt, which is currently estimated to be 20 to 25 years. This is also the most expensive portion of the funding plan, as that flexibility comes at a cost in the form of interest payments over the life of that debt. And there may potentially be upfront issuing issuance costs as well, depending on what method of finance that the team recommends at that later date. There may also be additional costs involved as some of these methods will require significant staff input from the county administrative office, county council, and the auditor controller, as well as work from those teams for ongoing regulatory compliance and disclosure matters. The third and final recommended source is the county's tobacco endowments. The current market value of these accounts is approximately $34 million. These numbers represent active market investments that would first have to be liquidated to be made available for use. These funds are related to a legal settlement from the late 90s between the then-major U.S. tobacco corporations and several states, including the state of California. The funding income streams vary based on the sale revenue of tobacco products, as well as Kern's proportion of the total state population, which fluctuates over time. It's important to note that these funds can only be used for hard capital project costs as part of a stipulation that was put in place when this debt originally went out as a tax-exempt issuance. In summary, the county administrative office is requesting your board's approval to work with our external finance partners to assess market conditions and develop a specific financing schedule using general fund, tobacco, and debt resources, and to return to your board at a later time with said plan. That concludes our presentation, and we are now available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Thorough and succinct, I appreciate it. You've now heard on both matters, 11 and 28. Are there members of the public who would like to weigh in on this absolutely crucial, critical, sort of love project of Kern County that we've been on a long time, to do right by our animals, to have a progressive, forward-thinking system in place? We made major progress, and of course, COVID, I think, really changed the calculation quite a bit on these, on these figures, but this has been an obsession of this board and Nick's department for some time, and I know we get a lot of, we get a lot of pushback from the community, a lot of concern from the community because the problem is quite profound. But I hope you see from today how serious we are about these concerns and how quickly we're moving to address them in a way that is dignified and of course, works with the county coffers. So please, if you have public comment, I see somebody waiting, please come down, give us your name, for the record, please, and your thoughts. Welcome.
Hi. Michelle Peters, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. In 2018, I was selected to sit on a subcommittee for the Kern County Animal Services Commission. Myself, along with four other selected community members and two commissioners, met for over one year to revise our current animal-related ordinances in their entirety. We made revisions and additions that I believe would be effective in addressing the pet overpopulation problems we as a community are facing. The subcommittee was very intentional in revising these ordinances as to not affect the responsible pet owners in our community. Though there is no mandate, I do believe the section pertaining to spay-neuter could help address the biggest contributors to our pet overpopulation issues, irresponsible pet owners. Not only were these revisions passed by the subcommittee once, we met again a couple of years later, and they were voted through for a second time and also approved by the commission. Though I do not believe there is one simple answer to this very complex crisis, I do believe that we should consider all solutions. A letter was submitted to the board, I believe, in 2023, and I wait with breath that is bated. Seven years ago, I was told that this wouldn't come quickly, and I see that to be true. However, I do believe that now more than ever, we have the opportunity to help move the needle. Things like this are often spoken of in terms of saving animals and less euthanasia, which is the ultimate goal, but I do see it on a much larger scale. Our animal advocacy community, which I believe includes KCAS, CBACC, every animal rescue organization here, every volunteer, school district that allows me to get informational flyers to their students, every mini-mart that posts flyers, all of the rescue organizations outside of our community that help save our unwanted pets, and every local resident that experiences the issues we face will also benefit greatly by the Kern County Board of Supervisors enacting these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for what you do and your passion, you know, for our furry friends. They rely on us so much. Hello, good morning, welcome.
Hello, I'm Robbie Miller. I get to work with Nick side by side. I just want to thank you, especially Mr. Peters over there and the whole board. Thank you guys for moving forward in Kern County with, you know, blessing us with spay and neuter money and looking into this facility. It's really going to be a big win for the animals, and we appreciate you guys from the animal nonprofit sector.
How wonderful. You know, the spay and neuter is a, it's a community project. Everybody's got to be activated. This board has put tons of resources, tons of resources, but we've got to have that, you know, that real belief, that real positive synergy from the community and people like you. It's so critical.
Yeah, so I get to go out with Nick, and we actually go into the targeted areas and let people know about this resources that are available to them with spay and neuter. And spay and neuter is not just, you don't just get instant gratification, it takes a little while for it to show its success. So thank you guys for staying in it with us in spay and neuter, and I think we have a bright future with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your good energy, sir. Keep up the good work, it's really important. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Parker, and I'm the current president of the Bakersfield Obedience Training Club.
Hi, Kathy.
And first of all, I'd like to thank you for all of the efforts you've made to fund spay and neuter and for the new facility, and Nick and Animal Services for the incredible creative job that they're doing in placing these animals. So as a club, BOTC, we subsidize the obedience and socialization classes in the area for adopted shelter pets that complete our seven-week program. And, you know, well-mannered pets are ones that are less likely to end up in the shelter. We've also led fundraising efforts for the AKC disaster relief trailers. We have members- We have members that have volunteered with Nick at the shelter for decades. But we also support ethical breeding. We believe it's necessary to have quality, healthy, purpose-bred dogs. But we also strongly support strict enforcement of the current regulations. We oppose the draft amendments that Michelle mentioned that were submitted by the Animal Commission. The amendments are overwhelmingly focused on mandatory spay and neuter, even though they don't say that. There are a few exemptions that will be subject to discretionary enforcement, but it doesn't change the fact that it is a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. Right now, you're giving these people $0 to $20 spay and neuters, and they're still not coming forward. So what we really have is a licensing enforcement problem. If people, if they have the choice to spay or neuter for $0 money to $20 versus a very expensive intact license, if they were informed, they would make that choice. And we don't have animal control officers. We're not funding them to go out in canvas neighborhoods like we did decades ago. People knocked on your door, is your, are your pets licensed? If we increase the licensing, people are going to make the responsible choice, and we'd like to focus on that. And we don't think that since the current ordinance isn't enforced, which already does encourage this, that, you know, adding more is not going to make a difference. The increases in voluntary spay and neuter and licensing are solid steps to reducing overpopulation, but again, it is that licensing and enforcement that's going to make the change in the future. BOTC strongly encourages the board to set aside the consideration of the amendments to the ordinance and establish an ad hoc committee to investigate proven methods to reduce pet overpopulation and encourage responsible pet ownership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your passion and your concern.
Good morning, Joan Payton, longtime volunteer at the shelter.
Hi, Joan.
And delegate to the American Kennel Club. On top of what Kathy said, I'd also like to suggest you saw the numbers or the pricing on veterinary care. We also have lost, I believe, four vets in the last year and a half to retirement. My vet and other vets I've spoken to, nobody wants to come to Bakersfield to be a vet in 115-degree weather. My proposal would be that maybe I know more money, but come up with some sort of a, if you come to Kern County and practice for X number of years, we're going to pay off so much of your student loan. You know, give encouragement. Other states have been doing this. You know, we talk about we have two emergency clinics. There are multiple days a week when you call in, say, my pet is sick, and they will say, this is not life-saving or life-threatening. You need to go to Fresno or LA. How many people can do that? I mean, yeah, yeah. You know, for me, it's not a, you know, I'm on my way. But we need to encourage people to come into this county. Continue to put money toward the spay and neuter thing. That's great. Thank you for finally starting the shelter. I would like to groom one dog in it before I die.
Oh.
So that's basically, oh, and I wanted to mention, don't laugh at me. Director Collin doesn't know this. I just received an email while I was sitting back there. BOTC fundraised $12,000 to make the second, we've done two trailers, for the shelter.
Oh, wow.
The second one is being stocked as we speak and branded.
Wow.
So we will be getting it soon.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll tell you, I remember having these conversations in closed session about how we entice a veterinarian here, because it is stark. I mean, if you think specialty care for human beings is challenging in Kern County, and it is, try to find a veterinarian with a reasonable cost of service. It is almost impossible. And when we went out to recruit for the county, I mean, I've said it was a half decade, but it's actually been longer than that, where, I mean, we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in salary because it is a well-paid, highly-educated position and nearly impossible with those, with the same kind of loan forgiveness kind of thinking. My goodness, you would just be astonished how difficult it is. I'm absolutely near impossible. It is incredible that we have a veterinarian that can do spay and neuter. We did not have that for five, six years. It's just very hopeless, demoralizing situation. But anything we can do to grow a generation of veterinarians, to encourage our young people, you know, to have our high school students engage in this process, and we can train some of these people locally as a pipeline, because getting someone here is virtually impossible. And I did, I would not have believed that. I would have thought that was a crazy idea before actually trying it.
Have you looked at the age of, the average age of veterinarians in Bakersfield?
No.
I think they're probably 50 and up. So it's kind of getting a...
I'm like, I'm almost 50. What is the implication exactly?
Well, we all retire. So, you know, if you've, and people don't realize, it's a very physically demanding profession.
Emotionally, too.
Yeah. They're the, one of the, I believe veterinary care profession is the highest suicide rate of any profession.
My goodness.
I mean, when you're looking at a dog that you've cared for from eight weeks and you end, you're part of the end of their life, and all the things in between, I mean, I can't even imagine. So, you know, we got to get some young people, encourage people to take part in the profession and get them here.
I agree. And the county wide spay and neuter, I mean, just to prevent the births is absolutely, you know, the way to go. It is, it is how we saw those decreases, and this board has been utterly, completely committed to that, I promise you. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and come back to the board. We do have two separate votes. Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry. Forgive me, I didn't see you. You snooze, you lose.
Thank you so much. My name is Janet Armentar.
Hi, Janet.
Hi. I just want to thank everyone for their comments today, Nick, very much for your presentation. And I also want to thank all the public speakers. I just want to also emphasize how important it is for us to keep front and center the level of suffering that is happening in our county for the abandoned dogs. I'm a volunteer, along with many other volunteers in this community, who go out and feed the abandoned dogs in the county. And I just want to emphasize, people need to really pay attention to what's happening. It's easy to come up here and talk about these things in a very distanced way, but when you're out there and you see the suffering every single day, the dogs on the side of the road who've been abused in the most horrific ways, the dogs that are suffering from starvation, from predation, from coyotes, from being run over by vehicles, we see it every single day. And it is an urgent matter that I know many of us care about deeply in this community, that we need to always keep in mind that these things are happening every single day. And for us volunteers who are out there, it's incredibly traumatic. And so I just really want to emphasize that and keep that front and center. Thank you.
You're such a beautiful soul. I really appreciated my time with you a few weeks ago, as you shared your heart and your efforts. Completely astonishing what you guys are doing on your free time with your own resources, and you have real jobs and real responsibilities. And I really tip my hat to you, and I want to thank you so much. We are moving forward, and we will, you know, we will continue to partner in these efforts and continue to push these matters. Thank you for making it so important. It is important. They are, you know, the finest among us, and they deserve better. We know this. We know this. So thank you. I appreciate you so much. Thank you for continuing to come back here. We're set for construction in less than a year. I'm very excited about that. The culture change that comes with it, but of course, all of us need to band together. So thank you. I'm going to close the public portion, return to the board for votes on 11 and 28 for my colleagues. I don't know if you have any comments. Thank you so much. I'm so excited about the facility. It's been a long time coming. We have fantasized it for, about it for a decade, and here we are. So thank you. But I see Supervisor Parlier has punched in. Is that for now, Parlier?
Yes.
Supervisor? Okay, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick, thank you so much for the presentation. We were together in Boron last week for a community forum out there. Thank you for coming out. At least half the questions, if not more, that were received in that forum regarding animal services. Your responses to that community were excellent, and I want to thank your team for going out to really a far area of the county and providing excellent services. They've had a stray dog problem out there, and I thank your team for engaging that community and trying to solve that problem. And I think the community was very thankful for those responses. A few questions for you, Nick. So your current staffing is what? As far as your officers?
Supervisor Parlier through the chair. We have 12 animal control officers and two senior animal control officers. Senior animal control officers are largely administrative, so it's 12 animal control officers for the county.
Okay. Well, I guess they're helping pretty good, right? How long does it take? I get a call from, say, Mojave or Roseman or Taft. What's the response time for something like that?
Supervisor Parlier, right now, it really depends when the call comes in, what time of day, what day of the week, but it's oftentimes 24 hours. If not, you know, two days for us to get out to the far stretches of the county. It just depends on the staff. I mean, on any given day, you know, we have 12 animal control officers, but on any given day, we may have six officers to cover the entire county. And if that number fluctuates, then we might not have an officer that's assigned to the Kern River Valley or the East Kern area, and that's going to extend that ETA. So it's something that we do struggle with, is having enough staff to get to those outlying, underserved areas in a reasonable amount of time.
Well, for covering 8,000 square miles, I say that's a pretty good feat. And I, of course, would encourage my colleagues to support your department in the way they can, too. Contracting medical services, is that even a possibility with the problems with veterinarians?
Supervisor Parlier, we do contract some veterinary services. Almost all of our public spay and neuter program is delivered through contractors.
As far as expanding those services?
I don't know that there's a capacity currently to expand those spay and neuter services, especially if we're talking about public spay and neuter services. Again, that vastness of Kern County and the far-reaching communities is difficult to partner with because of such a lack of veterinarians in those areas. So we're compensating a contractor to provide mobile services to those areas, and currently there are very few providers. So the options are very limited for when we're talking about mobile veterinary services to those communities, and the one that does exist here is very, very busy.
I want to thank you again for the mobile clinics that I know that you've had, especially out in East Kern. It's been a blessing for, you know, people out there that receive those services. And again, I just want to thank you and your team for that. Madam Chair, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 11 and 28.
We're going to do them separate, Chris. So let's talk about 11. We'll do 11, if that's okay?
Okay.
Thank you. You done, Supervisor?
I am.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to say thanks to Nick and your department. I know you guys have a ton on your plate, and you guys are doing a great job handling that. And it's also, thanks in large part as well to, you know, folks like Robbie and Strength of Shadow Rescue and all the different folks out in our community that are partnering with and working together with you to solve this problem. So hats off to all of you, guys. You're doing a great job. One of the questions that I had, I'm not sure if this would be better directed toward you, Nick, or to CAO's office. I know this kind of predated our current CAO, but that was one thing, as the chairwoman mentioned, that the board had discussed a while back, probably more than a year ago, was strategies about how to get new veterinarians here. And I remember specifically that we talked about the possibility of doing some incentive program with reimbursing educational costs or something like that. So I don't know if, I never heard anything back on that. I don't know if that was something that the county explored or where we are on that.
Supervisor Peters to the chair. I think those were explored in order to hire the veterinarian we currently have.
Right.
We had to provide a compensation and some incentives to have that veterinarian available. We have not done it for, to bring veterinarians for, to practice in private practice, but knowing that we have a lot of retirements, my veterinarian retired one of them. So that happening in the community perhaps is something that we can explore beyond what as a current employee, but for the community.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. I don't know if that's something that we need to make a referral for, but if so, I'd like to make that, because I would like to hear back on what we can do for that. Also, a question on the presentation. It says that this design doesn't include certain features or capabilities that public and staff have asked about. And I get that we can't do everything, but what would be an example of something that we have been asked for that we're not going to be able to do? I want to make sure that when we're building this facility, we're not just building it for what we need today, but it's going to be something that we can meet the needs of the community 10, 20 years from now.
As the design was developed, Supervisor Peters to the chair, we look at other shelters, and we look at St. Louis Abyspo Shelter, and it, you can see, is top of the line. The cause for that would be cause-prohibited, so we will look at what the community needs just now, but in the long term. So we had, if you look at the design that I put on the PowerPoint, that's just a simple design. We emphasize care, veterinarian area, program space for the animals, space for the, for, you know, cages, an area for the animals. There's a lot of abandoned animals out in the community that you're not, what we meant by that sentence, you're not going to be able to have a animal shelter the size that is going to completely eliminate the problem of abandoned animals. That's just not, not possible.
Right, okay. And then on the funding question of it, just because we're, I know we're discussing both of them at the same time, but I understand that there's about $30 million available, but how much have we set aside specifically for this project?
So we have the designation, and it's not, it's not as specific for animal services. We have another project, the Roseman Substation, so that $30 million is for both projects. So if we use it all for animal services, we could use the entire $30 million for animal services, but that would mean that the Roseman Substation either would have to wait until we have those resources, or we would have to use financing for that. What we're asking your board is to give us the flexibility, depending on the market condition. If debt financing is an option, we can stretch the cost through the, you know, and put the debt service payment through the life of the facility rather than having to wait or having to use all the resources in one project and not do the other. So the ability to do a combination of both.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then lastly, I get that priorities shift, and we don't necessarily tie our hands, and, you know, we don't have a crystal ball to know what markets are going to be like in the future, but considering that it's been over a decade since we moved into a temporary shelter, I feel like this would have been an opportunity that we could have been setting aside money instead of going out for financing. And it just makes me wonder on a larger scale what other needs we're anticipating for the county in the future and what we're setting aside to make sure that those are getting financed or paid for in the most economic way possible. And I know I made a referral a while back about having maybe a third party provide another set of eyes to come in and look at budgets and operations and try and identify efficiencies moving forward, but I think this might be another example of an opportunity to do that. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Peters to the chair, if I may. The reason why you can't set aside is because you don't have the resources. We were scrambling after the 2014 just to keep current services. So it wasn't until 2020, when we received resources through COVID, that we started setting aside some of those resources. That is why we were able to do the corner facility that was 50-years project. I mean, talk about waiting that time to develop a facility that was really needed. We're doing the evidence room. So absolutely right, we have a lot of major maintenance needs in the county. Before we build new facilities, we have to make sure the roofs are repaired, the, you know, the facilities are to the standard that, even the ones that we currently occupy. So yes, absolutely. We look at any resources we have. If you recall, as part of the budget, any carryforward that we have at the end of the fiscal year, we dedicate those resources first to maintenance. We need to make sure our facilities are being maintained, and then whatever we can, we set aside for this type of capital project. We do not like to go to financing, believe me. I am one of those people that if we can avoid it, we will. Through Measure K, we put the resources for one of our fire stations. Once that project is completed, that will free up some resources. And you also recall, your board approved $177 million project for our 911 system that we didn't have to go to financing. And right now, because that was priority number one for our residents, we need to make sure that, you know, there's somebody there when they need it. make sure that, you know, there's somebody there when they need it. We we concentrated in that project first. As that, we're getting enough resources for that project without having to go to financing, then we're shifting the gear for other resources. But we'll be happy to engage a consultant if your board wishes to do so.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. I want to talk just about the financing for a second because I think the item 11 was just to hear the presentation, right? Okay. How much money do we get roughly every year to the tobacco endowment fund?
The the way we structured Supervisor Couch through the chair, I want to make sure it's clear. When the settlement happened in the nineties, California sued the tobacco companies.
So it was a one-time?
It was a one-time, and we had approximately $80 million set up in the endowment account. Some of it was used for the original communication project.
So what's the what's the revenue we get from the tobacco tax?
So the tobacco tax is separate. That is a funding source. Most of it goes to public health and hospitals.
Okay.
This is tobacco revenue that the tobacco companies pay to the state of California. Then we, the state of California uses that money to pay our, because in the nineties, what they did is instead of waiting for the revenue.
Once we use it, it's gone?
Once you use it, it's gone. However, once we finish paying on the the debt that is associated with that revenue, then that revenue will start coming to the county. That's not scheduled until 2040. It's complicated.
You're still talking about, but you were, right then, you were referring to the tobacco tax, not the?
Endowment.
Endowment.
Those are two separate things.
Okay. Remind me, you, was our original estimate 60 million? Or is that the new estimate revised upwards?
That is the new estimate.
Okay. My preference would be to, I think what you're asking for is some direction, some, what do we, my preference would be to use as much of the tobacco endowment as possible, as little cash as possible. But how do we, how do we frame a guidance, I guess, to you? What what do you want to hear?
What what we're asking your board is direction to proceed rather than wait until we have the 60 million in cash. If your board is comfortable for us to bring back a combination of those, that the right amounts and the timing for how much cash we're going to use, how much tobacco we're going to use, and how much financing we're going to use, that's the direction we're seeking. We could, if your board chooses not to go to financing, wait for the construction of the shelter until we have the resources in cash.
That brings up another question. What's what's the timing of the construction of the shelter versus the construction of the Roseman facility?
They're both at the same stage. Those both are being done on a design build. And so they're both at the point where we would need your board authorization to go out to a request for qualifications for construction, design construction companies.
In any case, because of that, no matter what we do, we're going to have to finance some of it. Is that correct?
If your board wishes to do both projects now, yes.
So is that is that a question that we, you want an answer to today?
If your board is okay with the with the methodology of use of moving forward with the animal shelter now, the direction I'm asking your board is to give us the flexibility to use a combination of those three funding sources.
I know the facility in Roseman is needed, but I believe this facility, the animal control shelter, is needed more. So that's a prior, that's, for, to me, that should be our priority. I'm sure that this gentleman right here may have another opinion. But I just think that's that's, we ought to focus on getting that one done and getting that one done as economically as possible. But that's our discussion for the whole board. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Couch, thank you. Supervisor Peters, you punching back in?
Yes, I did, thank you. I I appreciate the the conversation from Supervisor Couch. And I know we also have a motion on the table from Supervisor Parlay on item 11, so I will second that motion.
Supervisor Peters, thank you. Supervisor Parlay, you're back in again? Are you okay?
Let's handle the motion.
Okay, got it. Supervisor Flores?
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. And for the CAO's office, I welcome the optimal combination of, from the three, and I look forward to you bringing that back. Something that gives us the maximum flexibility and protects our taxpayer dollars but gets us where we need to go in terms of facilities. And also, there were some comments about doing more on the front end because we can build an 80 to $80 million facility. It's not necessarily going to control for the for the fundamental problems that are arising. So I think enforcement is is a part of it. I think staffing is a part of it, per Supervisor Parlay. I think, you know, having enforcement officers on the ground would would help. So I'd like to see that be part of the discussion in terms, and also intertwined with that with that financing when you bring it back. But I think a combination is is a good approach, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. We have a motion to receive and file and a second on item 11. Would you please cast your votes?
The motion is received all eyes, or is approved all eyes.
Okay, as to item number 28, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Peters. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Parlay. Can you please cast your votes? Item number 20.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Supervisor.
What what is, what direction are we actually giving you with a motion to approve? Because?
My my understanding in making the motion was that we're approving moving forward with this, and we're going to hear back from staff on what that potential funding will look like.
That is correct.
That's my understanding as well. Supervisor Couch, is that okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did we get a second? Yes, thank you. Please cast your votes.
Oh. I know you voted Supervisor Perez. Let's let's start this one over again, sorry. Okay, everybody cast your vote. Now we can reflect the vote as all eyes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the thorough, helpful conversation and all the love and compassion and compassion from the community. Nick, you do not have an easy job. I am glad I'm not you. Can I say that officially? Thank you. I appreciate you, brother, very much. Okay, we're going to move on to our final agenda item of the morning. Thank you for your patience. It has been a lengthy morning, but very important discussions have been held and good, good collaboration. Item number 52 this morning is an item under our sheriff, Donnie Youngblood, who's present and available. It's a proposed selection of Summit Correctional Services LLC as a successful vendor in response to a request for proposal to provide inmate food and kitchen services to the sheriff's office detention facilities and consideration of an appeal by Trinity Services. We will hear from them in in a few moments. Good morning, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, almost. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Swanson. I'm a chief deputy with the sheriff's office assigned to the Detentions Bureau. In September of 24, the sheriff's office, in conjunction with county purchasing, issued a request for proposal to select a qualified contractor that will provide inmate food and kitchen services to prepare and supply daily meals to our inmate population. The sheriff's office is requesting board approval to award Summit Correction LLC as a successful vendor in response to the RFP and to enter into contract negotiations for inmate food and kitchen services for the sheriff's office detention facilities. I would like to introduce Detentions Lieutenant Jacob Pearson, who will provide more detail on the RFP process and has a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Lieutenant Pearson with the Kern County Sheriff's Office. Just to give a quick background, the Kern County Sheriff's Office is required to provide inmate food and kitchen services per the minimum standards for local detention facilities California Code of Regulations Title 15. For the inmate population housed in the Kern County Sheriff's Office jails, these services are to be provided in a professional and cost-efficient manner. Sheriff's Office is responsible to provide meal services to an inmate population that averages about 1,800 inmates who are housed at two separate adult detention facilities in the county of Kern. These facilities include, these facilities include the two facilities located at the Laro complex. All meals are prepared at the Laro kitchen located at that Laro complex. And the jail system has a total of 1,880 beds and intakes approximately 27,744 inmates annually. During 2023-2024 fiscal year, approximately 2.8 million meals were served and approximately 285 inmates were on special diets. As as Chief Deputy Swanson said, on September 30, 2024, the sheriff's office issued a request for proposal to select qualified contractor that will provide inmate food and kitchen services to provide and supply daily meals to the inmate population. The vendor was to be, was to have experience in the inmate food industry as well as good understanding of the sheriff's office legal mandates and requirements. Two vendors responded to the RFP, and the RFP is based on a best value criteria and an evaluation committee of three subject matter experts is conducted by a certified project facilitator. The evaluation committee carefully reviewed and independently scored each proposal based on the criteria set forth in the RFP. Each proposal was evaluated for a possible total score of 70 points. The evaluation criteria considered was the proposers' understanding of the RFP requirements and end results, proposers' proposed approach to tasks, proposers' experience in similar projects, fees, proposed rates, estimated completion dates, client references, and qualifications of proposers, staff for the project. As you can see here on the the table provided, Trinity received 65 points out of an available 70 points for an overall percentage of 92.9%. Receiving lower scores in project, understanding of the RFP requirements and end results, proposers' proposed approach to tasks, and proposers' experience in similar projects and fees or proposed rates. Moving on to Summit Correctional, based on the weighted scoring by the evaluation committee, Summit received 67.7 points of an available 70 points for an overall percentage of 96.7. Summit Correctional Services LLC received the highest weighted score. Summit has over 30 years of experience in inmate food and kitchen services, and their current staff have proper certificates to serve the sheriff's office inmate population. And on February 26, 2025, KCSO produced an award letter and was sent to both, both vendors awarding Summit as the successful proposer. That that award was based on Summit's availability to provide excellent, provided excellent comprehension of the RFP deliverables and demonstrated necessary experience in correctional food service. Summit provided a well-planned implementation and transition plan, and Summit submitted a lower per meal cost and offers an additional savings cost of powdered milk as an option. On February 26, 2025, KCSO received a request from Trinity Services Group for a debrief meeting regarding the RFP process. And on February 27, 2025, KCSO met with Trinity and reviewed the evaluation scores and explained the award to Summit based on the Kitchen and Food Service RFP Committee's scoring and metric and final scores. On March 14, 2025, KCSO received a request for the county's evaluation documents, which included scoring, scoring notes, and Summit's proposal. These documents were provided on March 27, 2025, I'm sorry. These documents were provided to Trinity on March 27, 2025. On March 19, 2025, KCSO received a protest letter from Trinity regarding the award to Summit. Trinity's protest was received 16 days after the deadline established in Kern County Administrative Policy and Procedures Manual, Chapter 5, Section 539. Following the debrief, following the debrief with Trinity Services Group, Trinity submitted an appeal asserting that they offered the lowest price. I'm going to correct this. On the initial, on the initial proposal, based on KCSO calculations projected, Trinity did be approximately $130,000 annually higher than Summit. This was over a seven, seven and a half percent increase on the existing contract and over a 2% higher cost than Summit's proposal at that time. Trinity also asserted that Summit's bid should be rejected for multiple meal prices and cost. Trinity should have been allowed to submit a new price for lower staffing, and Trinity should have scored higher for local vendor preference and subject and objectivity. I want to address the requirement for price per meal in the RFP. It states the vendor must show the detailed per meal cost to include all regular medical, therapeutic, inmate diets, and medical snacks. A consolidated per day per meal price should be provided, which reflects the total actual cost, including food, labor, other controllable expenses, fixed expenses, and administrative management overhead, and vendor's anticipated profit. Summit's proposal followed the RFP in one price per meal for the medical, therapeutic, inmate diets and medical snacks, but offered a price for religious meals as well. The evaluation committee in KCSO did not see this as a material change in the RFP or the scope of services, but a difference of interpretation between the two and two vendors. So the department considered, and after the protest, KCSO, the CAO's office, Purchasing Council reviewed the protest and considered that a modification of staffing is a modification of the original proposal and not additional information not previously submitted. Trinity's assertion of a local vendor preference not applying, there's a couple bullet points on this. They don't meet the office space required for a local vendor. They don't meet the local employee ratio to California to county ratio. And then also due to funding utilized in the payment of this contract, local vendor preference isn't allowed in the contract. This was cited on page three of the RFP, but we do use state funding through AB 109 in order to pay for this contract. KCSO upholds our scoring for improperly submitting material and a lack of a transition plan for end of contract. This was a requirement in the RFP under Page 46, Section D, Transition of Services, Description of Plan and Management of the Transition of Services to Minimize Disruption to the Facility and Food for the Inmates. Based on the protest information and good faith, KCSO requests a best and final offer for cost per meal, only rescinding the previous award on April 11, 2025. The best and final offer requested to clarify the department's request and evaluate both vendors in equal footing on, to provide the county with the best available option. The best and final option to clarify and request updated to permit, let me restart that, best and final to clarify and request update to per meal cost to include all regular medical, therapeutic, inmate diets and medical diets. And each proposer was able to submit a separate cost for religious meal services, as it wasn't specified in the RFP. The evaluation committee met on April 23, 2025 to discuss the best and final scores. And Trinity's scores were increased. The evalu, the evaluation committee mutually agreed that no changes were needed for Summit. As you can see, again, based on the weighted score by the evaluation committee, Summit received a 66.3 after the best and final offer out of 70 points, which gave them a score of 94.8%. Receiving lower scores in project understanding of the RFP requirements and end results, proposers' proposed approach to task, and proposers' experience in similar projects. But as you can see by the table up ahead or on this slide here, fees and proposed rates were equal, were were maximized for Trinity. Under Summit's, Summit's Correctional Services received the highest weighted score again based on the weighted scoring by the evaluation committee. Summit received, again, a 67.7 points out of an available 70 points for an overall 96.7%. The evaluation committee awarded Summit based on the value, that they found there was no need to change Summit's scores with regards to fees, that they already submitted an acceptable price, agreed that, I'm sorry, I lost myself. The evaluation committee agreed that Summit is able to provide goods and services with their efficiency in staffing, and staffing shouldn't affect their ability to meet the deliverables as proposed and requested in the RFP. To discuss the protest procedures for an RFP, any bidder or contractor who has allegedly aggrieved in connection with the solicitation or award of a contract or purchase order may protest. Bidders are to be advised that protest of the process, terms, conditions, or any other aspect of the solicitation must be made prior to the bid due date. Bidders may not protest the contents of the specifications of the bid nor the award based on the use of the local vendor preference policy. Bidders may also not protest the selection of a consultant through the use of an RFP process. And if a contractor wishes to appeal an award made for professional services over $50,000 but not exceeding $200,000, such appeals must be made in writing to the purchasing agent for final decision. All protests must include the protester's contact information, signature of the protester, or protester's representation, solicitation, or contract number, a detailed statement of the legal and/or factual grounds of the protest, and all documentation supporting the protester's position at the time of the initial protest and the form of relief requested. It is KCSO's conclusion and recommendation that the evaluation committee recommended awarding Summit Correctional Services to awarding Summit Correctional Services to provide inmate food and kitchen services based on their experience in correctional food service, well-planned implementation, transition plan, and ability to meet deliverables, overall cost, and transparency with additional savings per meal cost options. Notification of the recommendation of award occurred on February 21st, 2025, and after the best and final notification occurred on April 25th, 2025. Several debriefs were conducted with Trinity as requested. Following both debrief meetings, Trinity filed a protest with your board on the basis of awarding the contract to Trinity, as they assert it is in the county's best interest. However, after reviewing and considering their information that was provided by Trinity and the recommendation of the evaluation committee, staff are recommending denial of the appeal. KCSO maintains that a fair and transparent process was followed during the RFP for inmate food and kitchen services. Trinity's appeal seeks to alter the original proposal criteria, invokes a local vendor preference that is not applicable to their company or this RFP, and challenges the responsiveness of the selected vendor over non-material issues while unduly scrutinizing the evaluation committee's scoring. For these reasons, KCSO believes Trinity's appeal should be denied. Therefore, it is recommended that your board deny the Trinity Services Group Incorporated appeal and approve the selection of Summit Correctional Services LLC as a successful vendor in response to a request for proposal to provide inmate food and kitchen services for the Sheriff's Office and authorize the sheriffs to enter into contract negotiations respectively.
Thank you. Thank you for your excellent presentation. Okay, before we go to the public for any public comment, I'm going to ask the representatives of Trinity, both Trinity and also Summit, to prepare for your presentation, but at this time, if I could ask Trinity to come down, Summit will be after them, and then we'll move to the public. So, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors. My name is Jim Perry. I am the Senior Vice President of Sales for Trinity Services Group. Trinity is your food service provider at the jail, as stated before, and we have been partners for 25-plus years. Trinity has 40 years of correctional food service experience, and I kind of stress the word corrections because we don't do university or schools or restaurants. We strictly focus on correctional facilities. Focusing on correctional facilities makes us an expert in this area. We've employed 2,500 employees across the country. We have 350-plus accounts in 44 states. When we talk about our partners at those 350 locations, we're talking about incarcerated inmates in excess of 170,000. So when we talk about Trinity, we're putting out 185 million meals a year. Specifically talking about the state of California, we have 10 accounts, obviously yours, but also your neighboring counties, Fresno, Kings, and we employ 130 individuals in the state of California. Specific to Kern, we have a team of 37 individuals. 33 of them are living here in Kern County today, and actually 28 of them are behind me in the white shirts. I'd like to just acknowledge them and have them stand up. That's part of our team. If you will stand, thank you much. And then off to my right, we also have eight other individuals who are here from Trinity. They've spent hundreds of hours on this procurement process, and with myself included, we have over 200-plus years of tenure with Trinity in correctional food service. Trinity Services Group sincerely believes that there's been a flaw in this RFP process. We ask that the, we believe that citizens of Kern County deserve a fair process based on objective facts that are in their best interest. Objectively, we're not sure why the county wouldn't want to retain us, the incumbent, for 25-plus years that has provided great service, that has offered 12 more people, all Kern jobs, and also is saving the county over $430,000. To state our case, I'd like to introduce Terry Goldner. Terry's our local counsel. Terry is Senior Counsel at Klein, Dina Telly, and Goldner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, welcome.
Hello, Chairman, or Madam Chair Perez. Nice to see you again. Good morning, everyone. I'm Terry Goldner, and I represent Trinity Services Group. I want to say hi to each one of you. I also want to send my greetings to Margot Razanier, County Counsel, and to Nancy Anderson, our CEO. It's been a long time since I've seen you all, and it's good to be back. I was very interested in seeing the PowerPoint that Lieutenant Pearson showed you. It was interesting to me mainly because it leaves out some very important facts, and those are facts that should inform your decision today. I'm surprised that they're not mentioned in the PowerPoint. One of those very important facts is that in many instances, the evaluation committee in this case based their scores on objectively false assumptions of fact. The evaluation committee made mistakes, and those mistakes resulted in a fatally flawed evaluation recommendation, and that's what I want to talk about today. But one thing that's for sure, the numbers don't lie. You can trust the numbers, and the numbers here will tell you two very important things. First, that Trinity has the lowest price. There is no doubt about that. Period. Any suggestion to the contrary simply is not supported by the evidence. Second, that Trinity's proposal was going to save the county money, and over the extended term of the contract, it's going to save the county, the Sheriff's Department, and the taxpayers over $435,000. And specifically, we're talking about $435,695. That is a lot of money. It's as basic and straightforward as that, so I'm going to walk through the numbers together in the next few minutes. Another kind of, I was struck by something else that was in Lieutenant Pearson's slideshow, and that is that it suggests, in fact states, that you should replace Trinity, which is a 25-year incumbent who has a proven record of superior, excellent performance to the county. Because in the words of the slideshow, Summit's bid, the competitor's bid, is acceptable. That's what they called it, acceptable. And Summit's staffing level of 27 employees, which is only 40% of Trinity's staffing level, shouldn't, and the word is shouldn't, affect its ability to meet the deliverables that it promises. There's no assurances that either one of those statements is true, and given the significance of the contract, the money involved, and the importance of the services that are being provided, especially to prevent litigation against the county involving civil rights lawsuits for prisoners who weren't properly served in the jails, that's an important distinction to make. So it sounded to me, as I listened to the slide and I studied the slides, that the evaluation committee was under the impression that the standard for selection of a vendor in this case is which proposal is acceptable and which proposal should be able to deliver the goods as promised. Acceptable and should, that is not the standard, and you are not bound by the evaluation committee's recommendation under any circumstances. And that's exactly what your RFP says, that's exactly what your county administrative policy and procedures say. You are here to exercise your own independent judgment as you consider the evidence. So which proposal, the standard is which proposal in your sole judgment as members of the Board of Supervisors best meets the needs of the county? That's your standard. It's not which proposal is merely acceptable or which proposer should be able to meet its promises, or even which proposal merely meets the needs of the counties. That's not the legal standard. The legal standard is which proposal best meets the needs of the county. In other words, which proposal is in the county's best interest? So that's kind of your baseline, what you should be considering. And that's the issue for your board to decide today, but only after you carefully consider and weigh all the evidence and exercise your own judgment, your own independent judgment as to which proposer will best serve the county in providing inmate food services at the county jail. Trinity respectfully requests that your board decline to follow the evaluation committee's recommendation and instead award the contract to Trinity because it is in the county's best interest to do so. So why is it in the county's best interest to award this, to overturn the recommendation and award the contract to Trinity? Well, first, as I indicated, Trinity's price is lower. Selecting Trinity will allow the county to save $435,695 of taxpayer money over the next five years. That amount of savings alone is compelling enough to select Trinity. Second, as my colleague stated, my client stated, Trinity will provide 12 more full-time employees dedicated to the food and kitchen services at the jail and will do so at a lower price. Doing the math, it means approximately a 40% higher staffing level. And if you want to be specific, it's 36.36%. So Trinity's higher staffing level means better service to the county, and it means 12 more jobs available for county residents. What it means is the county and the sheriff and the taxpayers will get more bang for their buck. That's undisputed. Third, Trinity has a proven 25-year record of providing excellent service to the Kern County Jail. These are the very same services over the past 25 years that are the subject of the RFP. This is not something that you need to speculate or be hopeful about. This is something that is proven. This is a proven, long-time, long-term, excellent vendor who has received no complaints from the Sheriff's Office throughout the term of its employment or its service here, and there really isn't any reason to change. So if, I don't know if you brought your binders with you, we delivered a copy of our appeal to each one of you. If you have them there and if you want to refer to them, you might want to take a look at the letter of recommendation that Lieutenant Pearson wrote on behalf of Trinity Services as recently as July last year. You're going to see that it is full of effusive, positive praise for Trinity and talks about what a wonderful provider it is, how committed it is to providing excellent service, how it works well with the county jail, how it works well with the Sheriff's Department, and basically, it's a glowing recommendation for Trinity. So I would urge you to take a look at that. Another compelling reason to reject the evaluation committee's recommendation here -- let's see if I got my right one here -- is based on the evaluation itself and the manner in which it was conducted, the things that the evaluation committee looked at and what they concluded after looking at them. Here, you're going to see that the evaluator's comments are contained in their scoring sheet, and that's what we base our arguments on. And all of this together establishes that it's in the county's best interest to award the contract to Trinity. So let's talk about Trinity being the 25-year incumbent. It's been there for 25 years. Trinity understands the Kern County Jail inmate food operations better than anyone, and I would submit that they know it better than anyone in the entire country because they've been there, doing the work, doing the heavy lifting, providing an excellent service for 25 years. This is a large operation, as Mr. Perry indicated. Trinity is intimately familiar with what it requires and what is necessary to get the job done on time within the law and to exceed the performance levels. Per the RFP, this is how large the operation is, I don't know if you had a chance to really dig down into it, the vendor is required to serve approximately 2.8 million meals per year. That comes out to 232,000 meals per week or 7,700 meals per day. And as Jim Perry said, Trinity knows how to do it. In fact, they provide approximately 185 billion per year on a national level. Trinity consistently performs exceptionally well with a proven record, again, as indicated by the glowing recommendations by our own Lieutenant Pearson, who's here today. So please take a look at the letters of recommendation that are in your binder. I think that you will find them compelling. Another thing I want to bring to your attention is project understanding. The RFP defines project understanding as having three elements. The first one is a comprehensive, comprehension of the project services. The second one is awareness of the county's needs, and the third is being familiar with the project. It's called familiarity with the project. As the 25-year incumbent, Trinity understands this project, again, better than anybody else. Having operated the jail food service operation for 25 years, it also has more applicable service with respect to this particular RFP, and it's a big job. You can see how many meals it provides every single year. It does it consistently, it does it well, it does it without lawsuits, and it does it, it exceeds the sheriff's expectations year in and year out. There really is no reason to make a change when you consider all these factors. Also, it just doesn't make any sense. Why would you replace someone who is a superior performer with someone who has an unproven record, who's never been in that facility before, who's not familiar with how to operate this facility? And in fact, their ignorance as to the ability to operate the facility is reflected by the fact that it has a very thin staffing pattern. You see how many staff members it says it can do this with, it can't. And if you take a look at the declaration of Mr. Viegas, which is part of our binder of appeal records, you will see that it simply cannot be done with less than 33 employees, 33 full-time employees. Yet Summit thinks it can do it with 27. Seven doesn't show how it can do it with 27. It just promises that it can and asks the county to roll the dice and pick them because they promise they'll get it done. Are you willing to roll the dice on something like this with someone who is unproven in this regard? I don't believe that that's in the best interest of the county. So I first want to talk a little, I want to talk now a little bit of the background because this jail facility, when it comes to food services, it's really very interesting. There's a lot of legal components to it, and I don't know that everyone is familiar with that. So I want to give you a little bit of background. Inmate meals typically fall into two categories: regular meals, your garden variety meals, and religious meals. Religious meals are prepared for inmates that have dietary restrictions due to their sincerely held religious beliefs. This includes kosher, halal, or vegan diets for religions such as Judaism, Islam, and Hinduism. Religious meals cost more to prepare. They are significantly more expensive, and their number will always fluctuate. The number fluctuates because correctional facilities, including the Kern County Jail, are required by law to provide them, and in practice, generally, they're provided to any inmate upon request, and the vendor doesn't have any say in whether or not those meals are provided. The person who operate, the department that operates the jail is the one that says, "Give that person a religious meal." So if you have to provide a religious meal, you do it without question, and that's because the religious meal laws are subject to the United States Constitution and a federal statute called RALUPA, and RALUPA stands for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. It's found at 42 U.S.C., Section 2000. And among other things, what those two laws say is they protect inmates' rights to receive meals that align with their own religious beliefs. The RFP expressly requires proposals to submit a single consolidated price per meal that covered both regular meals and religious meals, and that's something that you should take into account. So it's crystal clear that when this RFP process started, the RFP required a single consolidated price to cover both meals, both the expensive religious meals and the non-religious meals. Trinity complied with that requirement. Trinity submitted a bid for a single consolidated price per meal. Unfortunately, Summit did not comply with that requirement. Instead, they came out with two prices instead of one single combined price. They did not comply with the requirements of the RFP. Because of that, Summit's response was legally what we call non-responsive, and I'm going to get into that in just a minute. But there's another reason why Summit's initial response was non-responsive, and that's because they failed to include a cost breakdown to specify all the details that went into how they come up to the numbers to get to their bid, and that's contained in the RFP, and it's a very long list of all the things that they have to have in their cost breakdown. Did they provide a cost breakdown at all? No, they didn't. That was a fatal flaw. That was a fatal flaw. So after Trinity objected to Summit's non-responsive split price, then the Kern County Sheriff's Office requested another proposal with two prices. And when it came back again, the second time, Trinity's prices were the lowest for both the regular meals and for the religious meals. And the difference, as I said earlier, is literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, specifically $435,695 over five years. So despite Trinity's lower price and the significant cost savings of Trinity's final proposal, the evaluation committee nevertheless recommended Summit, which is the reason why we're here today. It's really inexplicable. So as indicated, Summit's prices are lower. How do we prove that? We prove that by applying the county's own methodology that is described in the county's own letter dated March 13th, 2025. It's Attachment A to our appeal letter, which is in the binder that you have, and the calculation that's contained in footnote number one. It is all spelled out there in black and white. You can use your calculators to follow along. Like I said, the numbers don't lie. Unfortunately, the evaluation panel made several factual errors, substantive errors, and procedural mistakes, and every single one of them really is very concerning. And any single one of them is concerning enough for your board to reject the evaluation committee's recommendation, grant Trinity's appeal, and award the contract to Trinity. So Trinity has at least five categories of concerns about the RFP evaluation process and the panel's recommendation. The first one is that the scoring was incorrect because it was based on objectively false assumptions of fact. That's a terrible thing. An evaluation committee needs to make sure that the facts that it based its evaluation on are true and correct and solid. They neglected to do that here. Second, the scoring was not objective because it gave special treatment to one vendor over another. And the special treatment comes in when, in this case, when the first proposal came in, when the first version of it came in, when it was supposed to be one particular consolidated score for both religious meals and for non-religious meals, what did the evaluators do? Well, because Trinity's consolidated meal price was higher than Summit's the first time around, they actually deducted points from Trinity's cost category score. They dinged them for coming in at a higher price. But when, the second time around, when they had to come up with the two-part bid for religious meals and then for regular meals, Trinity's scores were the lowest and Summit's were the highest. Did they ding Summit for coming in higher than Trinity the second time around? No, they didn't. They treated them differently. All they did was raise Trinity's score, but they didn't deduct anything from the other score. It just doesn't make any sense. It shows a disparate treatment and an unequal application of the RFP criteria, and that is a legally fatal flaw. It also is indicative of a bias in favor of one particular vendor. So another concern, and it was mentioned by Lieutenant Pearson, is that Trinity actually qualifies as a local vendor, but Trinity was denied the local vendor preference. We're going to talk about the local vendor issue in just a minute, and I will peel the onion for you on that one and be happy to answer any questions. So here, Summit should have, by law, Summit should have been disqualified because both of its proposals were non-responsive as a matter of law. And finally, there really is no legitimate reason to award the contract to Summit when, in this case, based on the facts, Trinity's price is lower, the staff, Trinity's staffing is higher, and Trinity has a proven performance record of 25 years of excellent service, undisputed. So I want to talk about each one of these categories of errors. And the first one is scoring errors. Unfortunately, staff's recommendation to award the contract to Summit is the product of many, many scoring errors that occurred when the evaluation panel actually deducted points from Trinity's score. And how do we know this? We took, we took a look at the three, the three anonymous evaluator's scoring sheets to see what was their thinking? Why did they deduct these points? And they deducted points from Trinity for, are you ready for this? For project understanding and for similar experience. They also deducted points from Trinity for an alleged failure to submit financial information. And then they also deducted points for an undetailed transition plan. And you're going to see in just a minute that obviously Trinity has more project understanding and more similar experience than Summit, hands down. The alleged failure to submit a financial information, which was, which caused all three evaluators to deduct scores from Trinity, was wrong. In fact, Trinity did submit its financial information. It was part of the packet that it originally submitted when it presented its first bid. It was on a page in a CD. And do you know why they, they dinged Trinity points for that? Because they claimed that it should have been on a thumb drive and not on a CD, believe it or not. Were they willing to waive that as a minor error? No. Instead, they deducted points from Trinity for that. And then finally, the undetailed transition plan that they talk about in their scoring sheets, Trinity did submit a transition plan. They claim that Trinity did not submit a, a, a transition out plan, meaning how are they going to transition out to the next person? But they did, and it's actually a detailed, three-page transition plan. And it's, again, it's in the binder that you all have in front of you, and it's part of the record today. So none of that makes sense. Those are factual, undisputed scoring errors that were made by this evaluation committee, and because these scores are so close, they actually changed the outcome. If they had not made these errors, Trinity would have won the first time around. And if they had not made these errors, Trinity would have won the second time around. Because the second time around, the only thing that the evaluation committee was willing to do was to consider the cost scores, which is only one of seven categories. They kept all the other scores in place. They didn't make any of the corrections or adjustments to the scores that they should have made once they became aware of the errors that they made. They stuck to their guns, and they weren't going to change anything. That is troubling from a fairness perspective. So all of these point deductions that were made against Trinity were premised on false facts, including untrue or inaccurate information, and inaccurate interpretation of the RFP itself. And we're going to get into that when we talk about the local vendor preference, or a misunderstanding of the law. I genuinely believe that the evaluation committee did not understand that they were required to declare Summit's bid to be non-responsive because the problems with it were not just minor errors, they were material deviations that affected the heart of the scoring, including cost, which is the biggest, most highly-weighted category in the RFP. That is a big deal. And changing that is enough, absolutely as a matter of law, to have that responsive Summit be declared non-responsive. And that's exactly what they should have done. They should have looked at it and said, "No, you're not supposed to submit two scores. You're supposed to submit one." And they didn't do it. They should have been thrown out at that point, which meant that Trinity would have won from the outset, and we wouldn't have to spend all this time and money coming here today to argue to you. So it's really important to correct the record here because if your board decides that based on the true facts, now that you know them, the fairest way to proceed is to restore Trinity's points. If you do that, it will change the scoring outcome to Trinity's favor. Like I said, the numbers don't lie. The math works, and you can rely on the math. For example, if your board wants to restore the points taken from Trinity because you see, you concede, you conclude that Trinity in fact did provide its financial information on a CD, it will result in Trinity having the highest score. It was also a mistake, as I said, for the evaluation committee to deduct points from Trinity when Trinity's score was higher, but then not deduct it from Summit when Summit's score was higher. If you correct the errors again, Trinity comes out in first place. And finally, like I said, it was an error to deny Trinity the local vendor preference. So please allow us to set the record straight today, and I do appreciate your patience in listening to us because this is very, very important. We want you to be in a position to make a correct and a fair decision based on all of the facts and Trinity's appeal. So let's talk first about the improperly deducted points, and it's up on your screen now, for project understanding and for experience. This is very important because if your board restores Trinity's, Trinity's points for project understanding and for similar experience, Trinity will have the highest score. Again, it's all about the math. So what exactly is project understanding within the meaning of this particular RFP? And what exactly does similar experience mean as well? Well, project understanding is one of seven criteria that's used, supposed to be used by the evaluation committee, and Lieutenant Pearson had a slide that listed out all of the seven criteria, and I thank him for bringing that to your attention. The RFP itself defines project understanding of consisting of three elements. One, comprehension of project services. What kind of services are you supposed to provide? Two, awareness of the county's needs. Is there anything in particular that the county needs to have addressed? And three, familiarity with the project. Again, as the incumbent for 25 years, Trinity understands the project better than anybody, and especially better than Summit, who's never served the Kern County Jail. Nevertheless, the evaluators deducted six points from Trinity's project understanding, even though Trinity obviously understands the project better and has more applicable service than Summit does. Also, having been the incumbent for 25 years, Trinity is also more keenly aware of and more familiar with the Kern County Sheriff's Office's needs than anybody else. There simply is no legitimate factual basis for deducting points from Trinity in this category, so as to give Summit a higher score. It just doesn't make sense. And I, and I find that perplexing, and I hope that you do too. So what does the RFP mean by similar experience? It's Category C of the seven categories that Lieutenant Pearson had on his slide, and it's given a weight factor, and it defines experience in similar projects as consisting of three elements. These are different elements than the other one. The first one is relevant technical experience. The second, past performance on related projects. And the third is public sector, do you have experience in the public sector? Two of the three evaluators gave Trinity a perfect 10 out of 10 score for this criteria. But the remaining evaluator, who consistently gave Trinity lower scores, and that's troubling in and of itself, gave Trinity only an eight out of 10 score with absolutely no explanation of why that person dinged Trinity 20% in that particular category. Makes no sense. And so curiously, that very same evaluator gave Summit a higher score on this very same criteria. They gave Summit a nine out of 10 while providing the comment that Summit failed to list the trucks and drivers required for this project. Listing trucks and drivers is a, a part of the requirement of the RFP. So by including that comment, the evaluator basically conceded that Trinity did not, did not respond, did not appear to understand that they are supposed to disclose how many trucks and drivers are needed to serve the inmate population with food, yet they gave Summit a higher score in this category. That's completely, it doesn't make any sense. And again, that's troubling. So the evaluator's decision to, the third evaluator's decision to deduct two points from Trinity's score for no apparent reason and to give Summit a higher score, even though Summit failed to follow the RFP requirements, to list the number of trucks resulted in a score to Trinity that is inconsistent, illogical, and not supported by the evidence. And that is the legal definition of a decision that is arbitrary and capricious and prohibited by law. So this Category C scoring error could have easily been corrected, easily, if the panel had just been willing to consider that scoring errors were not just limited to those related to price and costs. Instead, they kept those first six categories static, didn't make any changes to them, and allowed the parties only to come in the second time around with best and final offers as to price. So no opportunity to correct those first scores, and they basically just ignored the errors that they made. So given Trinity's extensive experience in providing inmate food and kitchen services at the jail, indeed providing the exact same services that are the subject of the RFP and to the exact same customer, when considered along with the Kern County Sheriff's Office's characterization of the caliber of Trinity's services as reflected in the, in the wonderfully effusive, glowing recommendation of Lieutenant Pearson in the written letters that are in your, in your binder, doesn't make sense. And some of those effusive things that he said about them were that Trinity's service is incredibly professional and responsive, and I'm quoting from his letter. He also described the Trinity's running of the county jail as, quote, "incredibly smoothly and in a very cost-effective manner." Further, Lieutenant Pearson said that, that Trinity has provided Kern County with, quote, "years of excellent, responsive customer service," and further described Trinity, as I'm quoting from his letter, "an unbeatable force in the field of correctional food service." When you consider all of those and you consider the factual errors that were made, it just doesn't make any sense for an evaluator to deduct two points or, or 20% from Trinity's score or to award Summit a higher score for this particular criteria. So I've already talked about the issue of the allegedly missing financials. They were there all along. I don't know if the evaluation committee just didn't turn to the page that had the CD included as part of the page. I've seen it myself. I know, I can tell you that it existed and it was provided. Instead, they dinged them because it wasn't on a thumb drive. Ding them points because it wasn't on a thumb drive. I'll leave that up to you to determine if you think that that was fair application of the RFP requirements. So I want to talk next about the improperly deducted points for the transition plan. Here, evaluator two, this is the one that scored Trinity consistently lower, deducted two points on the, a, a criteria called approach to tasks, and basically, in, in substance, claimed that Trinity submitted an undetailed transition plan. And that's addressed in Mr. Perry's declaration, that's Attachment 11 to our binder that was submitted to you at Page 2 in Section B. But it doesn't make any sense because here, of course, Trinity did submit a transition plan. They did submit one, and it's three pages long. It just doesn't make sense for them to say it's undetailed. But when you dig down into the comments, the reason that this particular evaluator said it was not detailed was because Trinity did not identify years in advance who would be the one particular person at Trinity that would be in charge of the transition out aspect of it. Do you think that's fair? I don't think so. But if you look at Trinity's RFP, if you look at Trinity's response to the RFP, you'll understand what I'm saying. So here, more importantly, when you talk about a transition plan, transition plan basically means a transition out by someone who is not the incumbent. It doesn't mean a transition in. And so here, the RFP said, "Proposals must describe how the successful proposer will coordinate with the incumbent and the county to allow for an uninterrupted transition and implementation of a new service." Doesn't apply when you are the incumbent, regardless of the fact that here, they did provide a transition plan. So giving a score of eight to Trinity on this issue of transition plan by saying, "Transition out is vague, no point person or team in charge of transition," that's why they dinged them for that. Trinity should not have been docked two points because it did in fact provide a transition plan, and it was detailed. It's just unfair for this particular evaluator to show their bias by consistently deducting things from Trinity's score that's not justified by the evidence. I also want to talk about the inconsistent scoring on cost, and cost goes to the heart of this RFP. It is perhaps the most important category of all. In fact, it's given the most weight under the RFP, almost twice as much as any other category. So here, as you can see on your, on your slide, the, when Trinity, this goes to my point of Trinity being originally deducted two points on cost when Summit's price was lower, but Summit was not deducted any points when the final price was submitted. And the difference in numbers between the two is minimal. There's no reason for them numerically to have not treated Trinity exactly the same way that they treated Summit when it comes to deducting points for being the higher way that they treated Summit when it comes to deducting points for being the higher bidder. Four points were deducted from Trinity's cost score, and that's, that's, that's a lot. So here, when you talk about the scoring differences, I want to go over it with you kind of, this is a, a slide that really summarizes it. Six points were deducted for project understanding. Six points. If you restore those six points to Trinity, Trinity wins, comes in higher numerically. If you also restore Trinity points for similar experience and for the transition plan, because they were wrongfully deducted from Trinity in the first place, Trinity wins by even more. And then finally, four points were deducted from Summit's cost score. Like I said, this is the unequal application of the scoring criteria. If you restore those four points, Trinity wins by even more. So what is the harm from all of these multiple scoring areas throughout the process? The harm is that the scoring corrections, if they had taken the time to carefully evaluate this and corrected those scores like they should have, it would have resulted in Trinity having the higher score, and we wouldn't even be here today. So next, I want to talk a little bit about the staffing levels. We talked about it earlier, and I know Mr. Perry addressed it. Summit's proposal, first of all, didn't include any transportation, and in the RFP, it says, "mealtimes listed," but, I mean, in the, in the comments made by the evaluator, "mealtimes listed, but no trucks and drivers listed." Again, this is that one evaluator that consistently scored Trinity lower. It's on the evaluation ma, evaluation matrix at page three, page, you'll see evaluator C2, category 2. But, but the RFP itself expressly required them to provide food transportation, and it also expressly required them to indicate on their cost analysis, how many trucks and drivers are they going to use? If you literally look at their proposal, they're not going to have any trucks and drivers. I don't know how they're going to transport the food from the kitchen at Lardo down to the, the downtown jail. I don't know if they're going to do it themselves by going by Uber, and I don't mean to be sarcastic, or if they're going to expect Sheriff Youngblood to pull some of his correctional staff to transport the food down there. Either way, it doesn't make any sense. Let's talk a little bit about why Summit's proposal is non-responsive. Again, the RFP required a single consolidated price, but Summit's proposal originally included separate meal prices, two, not one, two, when it was required to have one. And this is important because when you consider that the religious meals are more expensive by considering one big price, who takes the risk if the number of religious price, religious meals goes up? It's on the vendor. The vendor takes the financial risk that there's going to be an increasing fluctuation, primarily up because it typically never goes down, although it can, and in some instances it has. It's the risk is, the financial risk is going to be on the vendor, not on the county, not on the sheriff's department or the jail, but by moving it into a two, two-part cost, it basically switched the risk from the vendor to the county. So now the county is going to have to pay full freight on every single religious meal because of the way they changed the RFP. That is a significant deviation from what was originally required in the RFP. Summit's proposal was non-responsive, period, because they did not submit a single consolidated price. Instead, they presented these separate prices. The county actually admits, in some of, in its responses, when it first denied Trinity and when we were, right before, when we protested, the county actually admitted that this was a deviation. And to his credit, Lieutenant Pearson also called it, if I heard him right, he called it a deviation here today, too. This is a deviation. This is also a fundamental structural change in the way that this RFP is calling out for cost. And cost is not a minor issue. It's not an insignificant thing. So to make a fun, a foundational structural change like this means that their response, their proposal was non-responsive, and by law, it means that they should have been thrown out at the beginning. And if not at the beginning, they should have been thrown out the second time because it still wasn't responsive. So let's talk about local vendor preference. I know that much has been said about it. I was here when your county adopted the local vendor preference ordinance. I was your county council at the time. I remember all the things that the board went through to come up with the local vendor preference ordinance. And the purpose of the ordinance is to attract employers to Kern County and to encourage local people to be employed and to kind of jumpstart the local economy. And so the local vendor preference requires certain criteria, and that criteria is contained, it's spelled out in the RFP. It's actually on one of the pages in the RFP, and we cite that in our appeal letter. And we are entitled to have a local vendor preference in this case that would increase our score by 5% for three reasons. One, we do have a local fixed office. Two, we pay local taxes. Three, we employ local residents. We employ at least 33 to 35 full-time employees with families here in Kern County, and we've done so for 25 years. To say that we are not a local vendor defies the purpose of the local vendor preference ordinance. Now, the sheriff's department, I believe, takes the position that, well, you can't be a local vendor because your office is inside the Kern County Jail. We do have our office in the Kern County Jail. We have two offices there. They're separated, they're for us, they are occupied exclusively by Trinity employees. Trinity pays the utilities for them, it's built into the price. Trinity provides its own computers, its own equipment, nobody else gets to go in there unless they're Trinity employees. That serves the county because it reduces any security risks by having anybody affiliated with the meal program come in from the outside. It's, it's a beautiful way to address some of the concerns of the sheriff's office, and we've been doing this for 25 years. We receive mail there, that's our address, and we've been doing it for a long, long time. There is nothing in the local vendor ordinance that says you have to pay rent in order to have a fixed office, or you have to own the building where your office is in. It is absolutely legitimate to have your office within the Kern County Jail, especially when you are the one that's providing exclusive food services to the Kern County Jail. It's a security issue as well, and it's really, I think, considered best practices. So they should be commended for doing that rather than denied a local vendor preference. I also noticed that in the slides, I think one of the things that they said was, "It can't possibly be a local vendor preference because it's only as good as long as the contract is in existence." Well, that doesn't make any sense because if the contract isn't in existence, you wouldn't need to have the local vendor preference. So, go figure. I tried to figure it out, but I couldn't. Maybe you can hear better than I am. So let's talk about Trinity's, the praise that the Kern County Sheriff's Office has made about Trinity. In the words of Lieutenant Pearson, who oversees these operations and knows what Trinity has done more than anybody else at the sheriff's department, he says that Trinity knows, it's up on your screen, "Trinity knows how to operate the Kern County Jail kitchen and inmate food service in an incredibly smoothly and in a very cost-effective manner." And in essence, they've provided a stellar level of service to the sheriff's office for the past 25 years. With all of these circumstances, and I will allow you to go ahead and read the, you know, what's on your screen, and I encourage you to look at the letter that's in your binder that's part of the record, when you consider all the circumstances and all of the true facts, not the false facts, not the false assumptions of facts, it is undisputed that, number one, Trinity has proposed the lowest price with the most staffing and comes with an impeccable 25-year proven track record of excellent service to the county of Kern. Sheriff Youngblood should be delighted that Trinity wants to continue to serve at the jail. So all of this, considered together, establishes that Trinity is the appropriate vendor for your board to select, and that it's in the county's best interest to award the contract to Trinity. So I respectfully request that you deny or disregard the evaluation committee's recommendation, which you are completely legally allowed to do. It's in your ordinances, it's in the RFP, it's spelled out. You're not bound by the evaluation committee's recommendation. So I request that you do that and that you decide to award this contract to Trinity. And finally, kind of a little note that I was left with after I listened to, I watched the slides today that Lieutenant Pearson brought up. The Kern County Sheriff's Office, in all of the slides that I presented to you, all 17 of them, it doesn't raise any concerns about Trinity's performance. Did you notice that? And their presentation actually completely neglects to mention the two letters of recommendation and the quality of services that Trinity has provided. If the Kern County Sheriff's Office is not concerned about the Trinity's high consistent level of service over the past 25 years, at its lower price and its better staffing, there's no reason for your board to make a change. So I respectfully request that you deny the evaluation committee's recommendation and instead vote to award this contract to Trinity. And I'm available to make, to answer any questions. And thank you, Chair, Chairperson Perez, for your patience.
Thank you for your excellent presentation. Okay. I, where is the representative for Summit? Are we present? Okay, excellent. Please come on down. You have just heard the, both the presentations from the county regarding the RFP process and their ultimate recommendation. You have also had the opportunity to hear from Ms. Goldner and their challenges with that process, both substantive and procedural. So I assume that part of your presentation will be respond to some of that to the degree that you're all, have the expertise to do so. But thank you, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and good to meet all of you and board members. My name's April Lee. I'm the Business Development Director for Summit Food Service. I don't have large binders because I'm the one who wrote the proposal that was evaluated, and I know it like the back of my hand. With me is our Senior Vice President of Growth, Melissa Moberly, and our Vice President of Operations, who assisted in putting the proposal together, Mr. Billy Wade. Summit's happy to have gone through this competitive process with Kern County and be evaluated and have the confidence of the sheriff's office as their vendor of choice. Summit does business with over 600 food service accounts across the United States. In fact, we are the largest provider of correctional food service in county jails. Here in California, we have 12 operations, all of which will attest to you about our experience, our ability to staff their operations, our local community connections in those communities, all of our innovative programs, and our top-notch customer service. We thoroughly assessed the operation here at Kern County. Obviously, coming in as a new vendor, we're actually at a disadvantage compared to an incumbent. Therefore, as the sales director and as the Vice President of Operations, when we're in a situation like this where we're not the incumbent, we always go overboard to assess every detail. So we make sure that we are staffing every position we need, that we are pricing it appropriately, that everything is included in our price. We did that here. We spent countless hours, both at the walk-through and afterwards, as well as prior to the bid coming out and understanding what the size of the operation is here. We operate jail kitchens across the United States the size of Kern County and many, many communities. And looking at that, we staffed this appropriately. We have confidence in the staffing. Some of the statements made are inaccurate. I do have copies of the staffing plan, page 85 and 86 of our proposal, that clearly show the drivers that were mentioned. If you would like me to hand those to you, I can, but it is in our proposal, it was there plain as day. With regards to pricing, there was a best and final. Summit was both the lowest price in the initial bid, and if you look at the best and final, we also offered a menu option that was the cheapest price in the best and final. So any concern that Kern County is somehow going to lose money by going with Summit is completely inaccurate. We gave the sheriff's office an option, a very good option, that is the cheapest price in both the initial bid and the best and final. We will be a strong community partner. I have to tell you, sitting through a number of hours of your meeting, I'm duly impressed in this day and age with the level of engagement by your community and the level of engagement with you as a board in your public service. I mean, I actually want to adopt a puppy from Kern County today.
Adopt you.
Seriously, your level of dedication as public servants is to be applauded. Summit prides ourselves on customizing solutions for the counties we work with, on being a good community partner, making modifications where needed to suit the very specific needs of this jail. We look forward to doing business with you. We look forward to the long-term partnership, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. If I may, I'm just going to comment a little bit on-
Your name, please.
I'm sorry, Melissa Moberly.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you. I just want to comment on-
I'm sorry, did you get the last name?
It's tricky. M-O-B as in boy, E-R-L-Y.
Almost like motherly, right?
With a B.
Okay, got it. That's really cool name. Okay, keep going.
In regards to the staffing, it's really important that when we are bidding, that we take in consideration the, the existing staffing. We want to make sure that when we move forward and, and transition a new client into our family, that we're taking into consideration the existing staff that is working. We do not allow anyone to go backwards in pay. They have a home with us. We want to make sure that they're taken care of and brought into our family as well. So it's really important to understand, typically when we come in, oftentimes, we actually are offering higher salaries than what they currently have. So we do guarantee that no one will go backwards in pay when we come in as, as the food service provider. Summit Correctional Food Services has been doing this for over 50 years in correction markets. We do understand the business. Billy, anything?
Thank you, ma'am.
I have nothing, but thank you.
Okay. If we have questions, we may call you back up, sir. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have had three presentations this morning, one from the sheriff's department, and both vendors, both the incumbent vendor and the suggested awardee. You can appreciate by this hearing how complicated this issue is, and certainly, we are not in an enviable position in light of the incredible complexities associated with such work. But I'm going to ask the public for your input. There are levels of expertise in the public that we don't necessarily have, or things that we haven't considered this morning. Would love to hear from you. I know our sheriff is here. I always appreciate hearing from him, but often, he allows his staff to maintain the presentation. So I will open it to the public and ask if you have any input. Now would be the time to provide it, and I would certainly appreciate it. Not all at once, of course. Anybody? Okay, well, I'm going to then, excuse me, return to the board, close the public, the, close the public portion, but I'm also going to ask the folks from the sheriff's department to respond to anything you've heard today, if you feel necessary. I don't want to compel you to respond if you don't feel necessary, but if there was something that you would like to clarify or clear up, now would be the time to do that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a couple of things I want to discuss after Trinity's presentation. In regards to the cost, we, we projected a four to five percent increase year-over-year on the, the inmate food cost. With the initial proposals, Trinity came in, like I said during the presentation, about seven and a half, just over seven and a half percent increase, where Summit came in just, just over five. So we, when we use the term acceptable, that's what we were anticipating, was a four to five percent increase when Trinity came in with a seven and a half percent increase on their current operation. It was all surprising, so that would, that would monitor the evaluation committee's lowering in the score, to the degree after the, the best and final offer, there was a $260,000 annual decrease in Trinity's proposal, best and final proposal. So after those numbers, that's why the scoring stayed the same for both, or well, while Trinity got an increase because it became an acceptable price, Summit's- Or well, while Trinity got an increase because it became an acceptable price, Summit's wasn't changed based on an acceptable price. As far as staffing in consideration, I don't believe Trinity's at 39 staffing now, the most current roster I've gotten, and they're at 33 employees currently staffed at our facilities. In regards to local vendor preference, we did discuss that it doesn't qualify under this contract because we do use state funding. An office in our kitchen is available to Sheriff's Office employee and is not exclusive to Trinity's, right? So just want to clarify those things on those presentation items. Both vendors are both very excellent vendors, I would say, if we're going to use excellent versus acceptable. They're the leaders in their market. There's three major vendors. These are two of them. I think the scoring by the evaluation committee shows that. Trinity got a 92.9% score. That's very high out of 100%. Summit got 96.7. I think the evaluation committee took into account the proposal in its whole and did a good job, a fair application of their interpretation of the proposal. That's it for me on this. There's any additional questions?
Okay. It looks like we have additional comment from the Sheriff's Department, which I certainly appreciate. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Again, Joel Swanson, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to go into the letter of recommendation that Lieutenant Pearson wrote for Trinity. We are very happy with their service. They have done a great job for us. We are at the end of a contract. We cannot award, the county cannot award a contract as big as what this is going to be. We had to go off a proposal. When we did, we submitted to anyone that provided correctional services. Summit and Trinity responded, and ultimately Summit won. This is not saying anything bad about Trinity whatsoever. We are very happy with their service, and I just wanted to say that, and thus the letter of recommendation, it was deserved. They do a great job. We also believe that Summit will also. We haven't worked with them, but based in talking with them and the results of the RFP, we believe that they will also do a good job for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, your professionalism. Thank you. I appreciate your additional insights as well. So I'm going to ask my colleagues to weigh in. You know, I have to, this is actually complicated, more complicated than I expected. Ms. Goldner made an excellent presentation. You know, I'm nervous about the process of reevaluating our process right here in public. I don't know where that starts and where that ends, frankly. When we have asked a group of family, of county family, to evaluate based on a whole host of factors, apply their expertise, their time, their energy, and then they give us an outcome, it seems inappropriate and really out of our wheelhouse to second-guess that process here, being not a part of it and not being experts in it. I understand that there's a place for that, and I welcome my colleagues in that conversation, but that does make me a little bit nervous, although I'm open to the conversation. I appreciate the presentation that's been made. Excellent presentations all around. I appreciate the service that has been provided. Sincerely, I'm a former public defender. I've had many, many clients go through the criminal justice system here. I care about all of them. Many of them returned to my office and asked for help getting jobs and whatnot. So this is very important work, and we appreciate it profoundly. But I would like to hear from my colleagues at this time and move forward with the decision. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'll just say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for trying to just be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, have an open RFP process. I would, I think that there were some things that were brought up by Ms. Goldner that definitely merits some real consideration, but ultimately, as the County Council's office is going to be responsible for our compliance with any legal provisions and also overseeing risk management, I would just like to give County Council a chance to share their thoughts on what we heard and anything else we should be considering.
Thank you, Supervisor Peters.
Supervisor Peters through the chair. I believe that Ms. Goldner did accurately state the role of the board. It does, the RFP does come to you for approval of the recommendation, but it is within your discretion to do something else if, in your opinion, using your discretion, you have, you decided that a different decision should be made.
What about, any thoughts just regarding how the, kind of the back and forth with scoring or some, it sounds like some of the misunderstandings that happened went, or the local vendor provisions, whether or not that's applicable in your view?
So our office wasn't involved in the selection committee, so I can't say what exactly transpired during that. But in reviewing the RFP, and it's a standard paragraph within the RFP, it's on page six, specifies that the county reserves the right to select the proposal, which is, which in its sole judgment best meets the needs of the county. So step one would be that in the opinion of the evaluating committee, Summit best meets the needs of the county, and that's within their discretion, likewise within your board's discretion. The recommendation by the evaluation committee and the final selection of a proposer by the board of supervisors shall be based on any information and criteria the evaluation committee and board considers relevant. So again, you have the right to review that, which may include criteria not listed in the paragraph above. Then one thing that is important is that the lowest proposed cost is not the sole criterion for recommending contract award. So if in the opinion of the evaluation committee, they weighted other things differently, that was within their discretion. And then you can agree with them or based on what you've heard or reviewed, not agree with them.
Thank you, and I appreciate you pointing that out because as a body culturally, this board has consistently used costs as the primary reason for a contract decision, consistently, and I have not seen them do that, do otherwise. So part of what makes me nervous about this is the ability to simply trade in and out which factors are most important here, based on a whole host of factors. I think it's very problematic, and I think we should be cautious about it. And I just want to remind this board that cost has been the driving factor that it has used to change the decisions of a body that has been selected and has taken the time to do the evaluations. It has been the top decision. If that is changed somehow for today, if there is some reason to do that, I would really hope that this body would put that on the record because it would be a departure from what we have done culturally, and, or trade in custom, rather, is maybe a more appropriate terminology. With that said, Supervisor Peters, are you done? Okay, so Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this, and there's a lot, the RFP process, I think, is fraught with issues, and nothing I'm going to say is in any way intended to be a negative comment about any county staff, certainly the Sheriff's Department, certainly not the evaluation committee, or either vendor. I just have a couple of quick questions. Ms. Goldner showed us, well, showed us a few charts, but one of them shows the cost of the regular meal, the cost of the religious meal, and the cost over, the cost savings over five years versus the other response. Do you agree with that, that this is an accurate portrayal?
Supervisor Couch to the chair, there is a cost savings. They have it at 435, 695.
Okay.
We show an annual difference of just, just over $125,000 annually.
So you might be a little higher. The cost savings you might tally up would be a little bit higher than what she showed us, potentially.
Yes, sir. I think, I think we would be more accurate in our accounting.
Without disparaging any reasons why, on the second go-around, somebody didn't lower a score for cost versus when they raised the score for a lower cost, but I thought, I thought there were some very good points made. I'm going to make a motion that we grant the appeal and award the contract to Trinity under the terms that they submitted. Is that an adequate motion for what I, for what you envision the intent of my motion is?
Supervisor Couch to the chair.
Do I need to do both, grant the appeal and make a motion to award the contract?
I think that's a clear motion.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Flores.
There's a motion on the floor, I think, or there's a second or not a second, we'll see. Can I ask some more questions?
Oh, please.
Before we take action, thank you. Supervisor Peters asks a question of County Council, but I don't remember hearing a definitive answer on one element of that, which was local vendor preference. So the appeal side is saying that they qualify. Sheriff's side is saying they don't qualify. I think our board deserves to know more definitively, does this qualify or not? Because there's a lot of confusion on that.
Supervisor Flores through the chair, I'm going to have Chief Deputy Katie Rivera address that.
Thank you. And I have more questions, but that's a starter.
Sure. As to the local vendor preference, it does not apply to this particular bid, and Lieutenant Pearson can explain that a bit more. He did reference that because of the funding that's involved. So it's state funding that's involved with this bid, and I think Lieutenant Pearson can fill that in, but the local vendor preference actually doesn't apply. However, even if it did apply, the evaluation committee found that Trinity did not win on the local vendor preference because it doesn't have a separate freestanding address within Kern County, while Trinity states that their office, which is supplied by the Sheriff's Department, which would be supplied to Summit if they were the winning bidder, that that is their local address. That is not what is anticipated as the local address required for a local vendor preference to be given. Second of all, their staffing level percentage, and Lieutenant Pearson can talk about this, did not meet the minimum criteria for locally-employed employees. So on those two points, they wouldn't have received the local vendor preference anyway. And I'll defer to Lieutenant Pearson if I didn't state that correctly.
Yes, Supervisor Flores through the chair. Local vendor preference is awarded by the purchasing manager. So the application was submitted to her. It was denied initially based off of not having a local office, not meeting the employee ratio, and later we found in the RFP, after some oversight on our side, but this contract in its entirety does not qualify for local vendor preference. It can't be awarded because there's AB 109 funding associated with the contract.
Thank you, and you did mention the state funding issue. But thank you for the added clarification, it is helpful. Thank you. And then going to cost with the understanding that it's just one element, an important element, but one of many, I'm also confused about the appeal side is saying that theirs is the least expensive. Summit is saying that theirs was both the least expensive the first time and the second time. You know, I'm really confused here. You know, which is it?
I believe Lieutenant Pearson can see this back. I'd be happy to address it from Summit's perspective as well. And I would be happy to address it from Trinity's perspective.
Of course. Thank you.
I'll defer to Summit.
Okay, so that's, sorry.
I think I was confused.
That's question one, but question one point B, who would be? If we can get to that point, it sounds like there was two stages of the RFP, that first stage and the second stage. So what's governing this final decision here? Is it that first stage, the second stage, or both stages?
Right. Supervisor Flores through the chair. The RFP process allows for the RFP committee to ask for a best and final offer, and so it's the results of the committee's evaluation of the best and final numbers provided by both Summit and Trinity. That is what the final award is based on, but that best and final only changed one criteria out of seven criteria. It only changed the price. So the remaining criteria stayed the same from the first go-round, and then the second go-round only changed the cost.
Supervisor Flores through the chair. Chief Counsel Rivera is correct. We had the initial proposals come through, and after the initial protest is when we decided to go to a best and final. Unfortunately, on a California Public Release Act, one vendor is able to get pricing from the other vendor within 10 days. The best and final was after that 10 days, and Trinity's ability to see Summit's proposal being 2% cheaper, they were able to adjust their pricing significantly.
Okay, so this is, so on the first phase, Summit was cheaper, and then Trinity came in cheaper?
Yes, sir.
On the first phase?
Yes, sir. Summit came in cheaper on the first phase. They also have a powdered milk option. That's a very cheaper, very cheap option as well. And then after the best and final second phase, Trinity has the cheaper price.
Okay, so the first phase was Summit, second phase was Trinity was cheapest?
Correct.
Okay, and then so what was the, what was the cost, the cheaper, is it 435 is the savings to the county?
That's Trinity's projections, but it's close to that.
Okay, and then what did you mention by the 125? What was that about?
That's our projection, so it's 125, $125,000 annually.
Okay, so you think the savings is 125, they maintain it's 435? No?
Trinity's assertion is that's 435 over the term of the contract over five years, so their annual savings is 87, 87,000 is what they project.
All right, thank you. And then, so even with that price savings, that doesn't, that doesn't change your scoring?
Correct, as Chief Counsel Rivera said, that's one of the weighted categories of seven, so it did have a 20% weight, but Trinity...
And Trinity won on that, on that one?
They matched scores.
They matched scores. So how could you have a matching score if one is less expensive?
Both were deemed acceptable. Acceptable, and with the information provided, Summit's pricing on the initial proposal and the price difference after the best and final, we thought it to be fair to not adjust Summit's scoring in that metric.
So then, just to recap, so even though one was cheaper, one was more expensive, they got the equal scoring?
Correct.
And then, that's all I have for right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for clarifying that too, Jeff. I appreciate it, the 435 versus the 100-some thousand. So on the first projection that Trinity came up with, I know that it would have been 435 on the second go-around, correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Parlier.
What was the first go-around?
The first, I don't have a five-year, I don't have a five-year, on their first go-around, their annual was 130, I'm sorry, $125,000 annually difference on their first proposal.
In favor or deficit?
In favor of Summit, deficit of Trinity. They were overpriced.
Okay, I don't know if you can answer these questions, or maybe Summit or Trinity can. Staffing levels, and I know that Summit made a clarification to their documents regarding that, they feel their staffing levels are appropriate, but Trinity has 12 more employees within the context of their bid. Do you feel that, given the information regarding the employee disparities, you still feel, obviously, by the recommendation, that they still could accomplish those tasks?
Supervisor Parlier, yeah, we feel confident in Summit's ability to perform the task required in the scope of services with 27 employees.
Now on the CD versus... Now, on the CD versus thumb drive point issue, can you just give some clarification on that? Is the mode in which that was submitted?
Yeah, the RFP required financial statements in a PDF form and on hard-drive basis. Most of our computers don't have a compact disk anymore. So going through the binder versus going through the evaluation committee, getting a PDF version to evaluate, they weren't given because it was improperly, improperly provided. Even post-evaluation, when it came to our attention, during the evaluation committee's first couple of meetings, it was almost a non-responsive issue that we didn't have this information. But that's why they've maintained the score of the two-point deficit regarding the financial statements provided by Trinity.
Okay, was that, just for clarification, was that listed within RFP as far as the mode of submission?
Yes, sir. As a USB device.
Okay, the local vendor score preference, I feel that was asked and answered, so no more, no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Parlier, so currently, we have a motion. We have no second, but I'm, you know, we need to move this issue, and I think it's been laid out. I appreciate both sides wanting to come up and argue some more, but I think we've done enough of that. Thank you for the offer. But Supervisor Peters?
Thank you.
Your thoughts?
I will second Supervisor Couch's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have, oh, Supervisor Peters, that was just now. Do we have any other comment, or anybody else want to provide input at this time? So we have a motion, we have a second. I want to stay, I want to stay for the record, this is an incredibly complex issue, more than I expected. I have full faith and credit in the county family, in their assessments, in their processes, and which is why I consistently support them across the board. I'm going to remain consistent in that today and continue to support what their recommendations are. But my colleagues, of course, will make their decisions based on the call of the vote. But I really want to thank all of you today. This has been incredibly illustrative, illuminating. I appreciate you so much, gentlemen. Thank you. Sheriff, thank you. I will support our Sheriff's Department's recommendation. My colleagues are free to do as they choose. Without further comment, I would call the vote. Please cast your votes, colleagues.
The motion is approved, three ayes, two opposed. Supervisor Flores, Supervisor Perez.
Okay. It looks like that brings us to the end of our agenda this morning. Thank you very much again for all of your input. We're going to move to closed session, and we'll be back at 2:00. Thank you.